Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for loving us from your boundless and gracious nature. Please guide us in this meeting tonight. Help us come up with effective strategies and to work as a team that can enable us to make recommendations for the betterment of our city and county. In your name we pray, amen. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item would be the roll call. Please signify by saying aye. Present, Tamika.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Wendellin.
Aye.
Leslie.
Aye.
And Ernestine.
Aye.
Okay, all right, we do have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I believe we have some recommended changes of the agenda.
Yeah. These two are removed.
Mr. Wheeler is here. Ms. Rutledge is here.
Good evening, I hope you are doing well tonight. So, tonight the county staff would like to request that you remove items R4 and R5 from your agenda. The county has made a Scrivner's error for both of these and we would like them removed from the agenda.
Okay. Suggestion from the county that we remove items R4 and R5 due to Scrivner error.
Mr. Chairman, I will correct my motion and move that we approve the agenda with the removal of R4 and R5.
Okay.
Second.
Second discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify tonight for the public that since those items are moved, removed from the agenda, we will not be hearing them tonight, so there will be no public comment on those items tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for September 8th. I didn't have any in my packet, so I don't.
We never received it.
If you wanted, okay. So, I wanted some motion on that to defer.
Chairman, I move that we move the approval of the September 8th minutes to the next meeting where we've all had a chance to review them.
Okay. Motion on table. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. The next item on the agenda will be the rules or procedure for public hearings.
Each speaker must sign their names to the appropriate zoning case sheet and fill out a public comment card to register their intent to speak prior to the start of this meeting. Each item of business shall be handled in the order that it appears on the agenda unless upon motion of the planning commission, the order is changed. A member of the city or county planning staff will present each item to the Conyers-Rockdale Planning Commission and will further provide a recommendation upon each item of business. The zoning applicant or the agent will state their name and address at the podium and will have 10 minutes in which to make his or her presentation. Any portion of their 10 minutes may be reserved for rebuttal following the opposition to the application. After the applicant's presentation, all registered speakers who wish to speak in favor of the application will then be heard. Prior to speaking upon the item, each registered speaker will state their name and address at the podium. They will also be limited to a total of 10 minutes. Once the applicant has made his or her presentation and the speakers in favor of the application have been heard, the secretary will then call upon the registered speakers in opposition to the application. The opposition shall likewise be limited to a total of 10 minutes. Once the public hearing portion is closed, no other speakers will be heard. As a reminder, speakers are to address the planning commission, not the applicant or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers shall be permitted. After all public comments have been heard, the planning commission may elect to hold general discussion. The planning commission will vote upon a recommendation that will continue forward to the City of Conyers City Council or the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners' public hearings.
Thank you. I want to clarify something from earlier about the items removed in the agenda because people may not know exactly which items they are when we said R4 and R5. And if you're here for these items, I want to let you know that we won't have any presentation on them or you'll be allowed to, or be allowed to speak. They'll probably, they'll probably be on the agenda at a future meeting. But item R4 is 460 Honey Creek Road, the item, 460 Honey Creek Road. And the item R5 that's been removed is the 2527 Sigmund Road. Okay? Thank you. Also, I would like to remind everybody to silence their cell phones, if you would please. And also to ask that, well, these issues can be highly contentious and I ask that you refrain, everybody refrain from any disruptive outbursts or comments during this meeting. Thank you. All right, next item is the old business nun, new business City of Conyers. We have no items. Rockdale County, new business. Item R1, 1945 Sigmund Road. Rezoning case number 2022-08. It's a rezoning request from R1 Single Family Residential to M1 Limited Industrial. Parcel 022-001-0044, 12.089 acres. The applicant is the Galloway Law Group LLC.
Good morning, planning commission members. Again, first case for you this evening is RZ 22-08. Can you guys hear me? I'm sorry. Better?
Close fifty years.
Y'all hear me now? Okay, perfect. Oh, back up some. Again, is case 22-008. Subject property is 1945 Sigmund Road. Again, the applicant is the Galloway Law Group and the applicant is requesting to rezone from R1 to M1 Limited Industrial for the construction of a 180,000 square foot warehouse. This is the aerial photo of the subject property. Again, the property has frontage along Sigmund Road, Lester Road, and Farmer Road. Again, the subject property is currently undeveloped and has a wooded area. There has been no identified streams or floodplains located on the subject property. The current zoning again is R1. Located to the southern portion of the subject property is a limited additional, limited industrial zoning category and located again to the east is industrial as well. And then located to the north of the subject property is R1 Single Family District Zone Property. The future land use for the subject property is light industrial. Again, as you can clearly see in the gray shaded area, located to the west of the subject property or high density zone, future land use of high density. Located to the north of it is a medium density character area. In summary, the applicant again is trying to develop 180 square foot warehouse. They will have access along, two, well, actually three major access points. Truck access will be along Farmer Road and Lester Road. Passenger vehicles access will be located off Sigmund Road. The applicant did submit a traffic study that showed that there will be no significant issues or significant issues when it comes to the, to the usage. All levels of service are deemed acceptable. The, the subject property is located in, again, a light industrial transportation activity area. Again, this is the, this is the current site plan that applicant submitted to us. Again, as you can clearly see that the, again, the access points are along Farmer Road and Lester Road. The applicant did, is indicating that there will be a landscape buffer located off Farmer Road, Evergreen Planting. I think, believe it will be a 20-foot buffer to kind of, to block the view of the residential zone property located to the north, northwestern of the, of the property. Again, access, full access again is along Sigmund Road for passenger car vehicles while truck routes will be able to come in off Lester Road and Farmer Road. This applicant has, this application has been reviewed by other department comments. The only comment, the other, the only comment of significant note is from Water Resources. They have indicated that there is no sewer capacity for this project. However, the applicant has indicated that they will do a sewer line across the street and into the existing sewer tap across from them. So therefore, staff does recommend approval of this application with the following conditions. The applicant is here for his presentation as well. Did you have questions of staff or would you wait for, or would you like for the applicant to present before asking?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did I hear you say that both the entrance and the exit would be from Sigmund Road?
That's for passenger vehicles.
Say again.
Passenger vehicles, not truck, not trucks, passenger vehicles. If you, if you can go look on the site plan, again, they indicate that the truck loading and, and delivery has got the rear of the building. As the front, that's where all passenger vehicles parking spots, while all the truck loading are at the rear of the building.
So, then where would the, the truck entrance is?
The truck entrance again is full access along Farmer Road and Sigmund Road.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, all right.
Now hear from the applicant agent.
Members of the planning commission, my name is Woody Galloway with Galloway Law Group, 4062 Peachtree Road, Atlanta, Georgia. Represent Huntington Industrial Partners in this request to rezone 1945 Sigmund Road from R1 to M1 to allow light industrial uses. You'll recall back in July, this application came before you and you unanimously recommended approval of this request. Unfortunately, the, there was a misadvertisement that was done and so we have to come back through the process. But you've heard this request, there are no changes to what we've asked, no changes at all to the proposal, but we just have to go back through the process after having met the advertising requirement. Since you've already heard it, I'm going to be brief and be glad to answer any questions that you have or go into greater depth on any issues that you may identify. If you go to the slide, so this slide, and if you're following along, on the, on the paper copy, it is the second slide. Huntington Industrial Partners is a very experienced organization. Their principles have collectively during their careers developed 200 million square feet of industrial space. So, they are very experienced and bring that experience to this proposal. If you go to the next slide. This slide shows the land use, future land use map on the left and the zoning map on the right. As staff has indicated, the future land use map shows the property and all the adjacent properties, south Farmer Road, all as industrial. The zoning has followed suit, so you've got basically all the property except for two south of Farmer that are already zoned and developed under industrial uses. The property is within an industrial area. It's been an industrial area, it's been planned for industrial for decades. It's been on the future land use plan map that shows the property for industrial. If you go to the next slide is the site plan, as staff indicated. You've got the main entrance, which is for, primarily for automobiles, will be at Sigmund. We've been in discussions with DOT about getting a median break there to allow cars to go in and out of, of the facility. There's also a right in, right out, one segment that can be used by trucks to get to the rear of the site. But the Sigmund Road access is primarily for, for cars. You have an access off of Farmer and an access off of Lester that will primarily serve any truck traffic that, that is there. This is, as far as a development, it's a single dock, rear loaded facility, very typical in this industry. They have less traffic demands, truck demands than much larger facilities that are cross dock and that kind of thing. So, you've got, it's a much smaller facility. If you go to the next slide, these are just photographs of recent Huntington Industrial Partners developments. Depicts the quality that they put into their developments. So, with that, I will reserve the remainder of my time for rebuttal if there are any questions or comments.
I have a couple of questions for you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, my concern is more traffic flow of those trucks out of that facility. So, if you are riding down Farmer Road from Lester and you're heading towards, say, Rockbridge, you're into houses in .2 miles. And if you come out and you're riding down Lester away from Sigmund, you're into houses in about 2.2 miles. So, my concern is just that those trucks be made to have to go. So, if they're coming out of Farmer, they have to go to take a right, go to Lester, take a right, and hit Sigmund. And if they're coming out of Lester, they have to take a right and go to Sigmund because that way they don't bother the homes. And I think that's, that's important when you have trucks coming in and out. I mean, you can have a beautiful facility. And also, if you ever have driven Lester on the other side, there's some extremely acute turns that are, that are hard for me to do with a horse trailer. So, for the trucks, it would be very difficult. So, I think that's a concern for me.
I would like to concur with that and I need to apologize because I was unable to make the July meeting. So, I did not hear this, this request, but that is a concern of mine also is the traffic flow, especially down Lester Road and the, and the, the, and those neighborhoods that are in there trying to go to work and the big trucks that will just kind of bottleneck traffic. So, traffic flow would be a concern of mine.
And that is something that, that I'll address in a minute, but, but it is, we, we did a traffic study. We hired Kimble Horn, which is the best in the business, to do a traffic study of this prior to filing the application. If you'll flip back to the last two slides in the presentation, the first of which is just a, it's a distribution and trip generation for AM peak and PM peak. If you look at, at the two columns on the far right, you've got AM peak hour and then PM peak hour. And the, the total truck trips for the AM peak hour, the entire AM one-hour peak of, of truck traffic is four trucks over an hour. So, you've got one every 15 minutes. And then in the PM, it's five. So, you know, it's, we're not talking about a high volume. And that's what I wanted to point out to you in the opening relative to the size of this facility. It's, it's 180,000 square feet, it's a small sized facility. And so, they don't have, this doesn't generate a lot of truck trips. And that data is based on, it's, it's called the ITE Trip Generation Manual. And it's Institute of Transportation Engineers data they've collected over decades. And they refine that data all the time. And this is, represents the truck and, and car, because we have car as well, distribution over, for this size facility. So, we, we know what the trip, the trip generation is going to be like. And I got the, the, the issue was raised in terms of direction. And this is, this will typically be a single tenant type building because of its size. And those, that owner or lessee can, has good control over their drivers. And so, that could be encouraged as well.
Interesting.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question as well? Could you confirm how many doors is on this particular facility? You indicate that it's small, but could you just tell me how many doors as far as the warehouse?
I have counted the number of doors, but do you know how many?
On this type of facility? The reason I asked about doors because another question, when was this study done?
When was the study done?
Yes.
The study was done as a part of filing the application?
At what date, what timeframe?
Oh.
A year ago?
It was done June, so, but let me, let me tell you what, what they do as it relates to COVID. Is that where you're headed with this? Because.
No, it's not.
Okay, the, the number of trips is down based on the current economic climate. It has been down, but what they use are trip generation data that has been collected over time. So, it's not, it's not any specific time dependent.
Because there's another facility that's on Old Colvin Highway, probably less than two miles from this facility. And it's not totally up and running at this time and it has 60 doors, so.
Yeah, that's a much bigger facility, much, much bigger.
But it's, it's going to impact the same neighborhood.
This, this will have 20 doors.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You have in and outs on Sigmund, but also Lester and Farmer.
Yes, there will be, we've got great access to the site. So, you've got lights on at both ends. So, if you take Farmer all the way down to Sigmund, there's a light at intersection there. You've got a light at intersection at Sigmund and Lester. And so, you've got great access to the site.
Any concern you have with trucks on Farmer Road or, you know, rather than just in and out on Sigmund Road, the major arterial?
Well, you know, this lends itself to, this site lends itself to a rear dock with the rear dock being located on the, on the northern end of the site because it doesn't really look like it, but the site narrows as it goes from south to north. And so, that is why it's, it's oriented the way it is. And the presentation of having the vast majority of trips are going to be single, or going to be car trips that would enter off of Sigmund.
Enter off of Sigmund?
Yes, sir.
What about Lester and Farmer?
You typically try to separate truck and car trips on, on site. And that's because of the way they have to maneuver. Once they get on the site, the trucks have to maneuver. So, you want to separate cars and, and trucks.
That exit on the eastern side that exits on Sigmund Road, would, would a truck come be able to use that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, you could. You can't, that, that is a right in, right out.
Okay.
So it's, it's a limited access, but the vast majority of trips are going to want to go back to the expressway.
In your traffic study, did you consider, because it's my understanding that there's another warehouse in that area someplace? So was that the traffic for that warehouse with their trucks plus the existing residents that are there and their cars, was that all studied in your traffic study or just what impact you would have?
It's, what they do is when they do a traffic analysis, they look at, they take counts and they do, they enhance those counts based on a growth factor for, because this won't come online until 2023, so they'll have a growth factor in there that if they know of a specific development, then oftentimes they are asked to put that in. I don't know whether it happened in this case or not, but they do have a growth factor that's built into the equation. And then they use the trips on top of that. But, you know, this is, it's based on the impact that this site has plus the existing traffic on the network.
Okay.
Thank you. This time we will hear people that are signed up to speak. Do we have?
Yes, sir. We have three individuals here to speak in opposition of the application.
Okay.
The first one is Ms. Dr. Linda Akins Young.
Good evening, members of the Conyers-Rockdale Planning and Zoning Commission, the Rockdale County and City, and Conyers staff and others gathered because you care what happens in Rockdale, Conyers, Georgia. Commission members, what can I say? We were in shock when we realized that there was a second request to rezone for a warehouse truck stop in our neighborhood. I am here this evening singing the same song, verse two, that I sang on September the 8th. We met with you at that time for an identical zoning request, same type of warehouse truck stop. The only difference is that the location for this zoning request is across the street from the previous request. We were not present in July because there was no sign on Farmer Road or in our area regarding this request on Farmer Road. Item R1 REZ case number 202208 seeks to rezone from R1, single family residential, to M1, limited industrial, 12 acres, to build 180,000 square foot warehouse truck stop, 20 doors, and from where we live, we can't separate the cars from the trucks because this is our in and out for our neighborhood. Again, I am vehemently opposed to this rezoning request, and so are many other residents of our Farmer-Lester Road communities. Mr. Chairman, would you please ask those in opposition to this case to please stand?
No, ma'am. Please just continue.
Just as on September the 8th, when we met with you, we opposed this rezoning request because of safety. It would literally destroy our neighborhood and put our lives, the lives of our children, neighbors and friends in harm's way. The proposed location for this gigantic warehouse truck stop is our only route in and out of our neighborhood. We oppose the rezoning because of the noise and pollution that having trucks going and coming all day and all night would bring to our neighborhood. We oppose this rezoning because of the impact it would have on our streets. As we shared on our last visit, we already have dump trucks and extensive cut through traffic that use our streets as their route, and they literally destroyed the pavement, making it dangerous for cars to travel for potholes. We oppose this rezoning because it violates the Rockdale County Land Use Plan. Some of us have been in these neighborhoods four or five generations. We need you to help us continue to be Rockdale County citizens. Rockdale County Planning and Zoning Board, we are truly grateful for your vote on September the 8th to deny the request to build a warehouse truck stop in our community. Please let us count on your vote to deny the current request, which is exactly the same thing. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
The next speaker is Mr. Al Tartt.
To the Planning Commission Board and all of its members, just as Dr. Young has alluded to, this would create a total traffic nightmare for us. And the reason is, is that the final impact of all of this rests at I-20. Once the trucks are loaded and they head out, they're all going to be confronted with, first of all, a railroad crossing, and then number two, the I-20 exit ramp to go to their destinations. So we feel that this is something that should be opposed. This is the first one, the 1975, because in addition to all of that, you have to have employee parking that's going to take up X amount of space in addition to the trailers, in addition to the trucks. So it's going to be a total nightmare for us all together. And no matter what side they load on, no matter what's in place, truck drivers have their own mindset. They're going to enter and exit wherever they feel that there's a problem that's going to confront them. They're going to ignore that and go the way that they need to in order to get out and get that load off for that day because basically they are paid by the loads and whether or not they get the stock where it's supposed to be. And we just need to consider that because the citizens from Lester Road, from Farmer Road are trying to get to work in addition to all of that. The school buses are coming in, trying to pick up children and go in and out, and this is just a total nightmare. So we ask respectfully for your opposition as well to this proposal.
Thank you, sir.
The last speaker is Mr. Johnny Smith.
I just want to say, start out by saying, I lived in DeKalb County for 21 years. And of 21 years, I've unfortunately never went to a council meeting or a board meeting, board of commissioners meeting. But since I've been in Rockdale, I've been, as a resident, I've been having to fight like almost every two months just to preserve, you know, the neighborhood which I live. I was very excited to move to Rockdale, but I'm having kind of second thoughts about it because of the encroachment of commercialization and industrialization. So I oppose any more warehouse building, any industrialization without, you know, citizens being involved and, and having a voice to decide, you know, what their living conditions are going to be like. So there's a, on record, there's a picture just only a month ago at the corner of Lester and what's the, the Farmer Road, a jackknife 18-wheeler stuck. So you're not going to tell me, no one can tell me that 18-wheelers are not going to be zooming past my house, and my house sits right on Lester Road. When I can throw a rock to a hydro X and hit their parking lot, I wake up to beeping sounds, you know, late in the morning, beeping sounds. I see their trucks zooming past my house. I see 18-wheelers now when they're not supposed to go past my house. And that was evident. The guy was coming past my house to make a right, to get on to Farmer Road, to head towards 20, and he got stuck. What more do we need, guys? To have these people approach you about this, it levels on the line of becoming ridiculous. Now, unless you want to see me here every time this happens, you'll see me. But know there'll be other people coming as well. And I think.
Thank you, sir. Is that?
That's all the public.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Now we'll hear from the agent for rebuttal.
Which time do I have? I assume the questions didn't count against my time, right?
Pardon me?
I assume that your questions, my answers to your questions didn't count against my.
No, no, sir.
Do you know how much time I got?
Five minutes, okay. All right, great. That's plenty. First of all, this is not a truck stop. It's a light industrial facility. There, there obviously will be trucks involved, but it will also have 10% of, of the facility will be office. That's why the vast majority of the trips are, are car trips. And, you know, to say that this is like the Oakmont application that came before you and then ultimately went to before the, before the board is just not correct. This is 40% of the size of the Oakmont deal. It's also substantially because of that, the truck generation is so much smaller. It's actually exponentially smaller because of the way those facilities work. The larger they become, the more they are dependent on trucks. Oakmont site is north of Farmer. If you look at the land use map, Farmer is the dividing line between industrial and residential. It was on the residential side of that. It had not been planned for industrial, whereas this site has been planned for industrial for decades. This site has been in the Shippen family. David McDaniel is actually, he's with Huntington, but he's also in the Shippen family. And that family has owned this property for 45 years. They've paid taxes on this property for 45 years, knowing that that property would be developable for industrial. You've got industrial to the east, you've got industrial to the west, you've got industrial to the south. And this property is shown in the land use plan for industrial. So just like single family property owners ought to be able to look at the land use plan and be able to count on some stability, obviously there are exceptions, but you ought to be able to look at the land use plan and say what the property should be developed for. In this case, there's no question that R1, which the property is owned, is not, is not proper. You're not going to develop houses on one and a half acre lots on this property, and everything around it is industrial. This makes sense. We provided a traffic study in, in our case where Oakmont did not. The traffic study analyzed the impact. The traffic study showed there is no change in the level of service as a result of this development. In fact, the highest increase in wait time after development versus if the development didn't occur is less than two seconds. And yet you're allowing property to be developed, property owners that have owned it for decades, allowing property to be developed as planned by this county and as recommended by your staff and as counted on by those property owners. We just feel like there really is no other reasonable use for the property. As I indicated before, the number of trucks that we're talking about is minuscule. You're talking about four trucks in the AM peak, you're talking about six trucks in the PM peak. It's minuscule. And it will provide good jobs, it will provide an economically viable development for that area, and we think that it's the appropriate zoning, as does your staff, as does your land use plan. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions?
I don't have a question. I have a statement. I want to just say that I am, when I look at the future land use plan, I'm not opposed to the fact that maybe it needs to be industrial. It's just what the industry is, what the business is. And every business will not have trucks that will clock up the streets that are already densely populated with cars and other vehicles. And it's not just during, during the peak hours. You know, there are people that are there that are, that are in those neighborhoods that are retired that may want to go out to lunch. So it's not just the peak hours. There are buses that are coming out and buses that are going in. So it's not that I have an issue with it being industry, it's just what the industry is. And going back to a statement that you made, I do believe that you are not the, this exact same, you're not looking to do the exact same thing that the company last month did. It's just a smaller version of the same thing. So that's just my statement.
And I didn't go into the, the number of, of trips over the, there are only 52 trucks over the entire day.
Yeah.
So that's 24 hours. So it really does not have any trucks at all.
Okay.
Well, does it say 104? There are 52 in and then 52 out.
Well, those are trips if you want to talk about trips or trucks. So it's 52 trucks go in, 52 come out. That's 104. Or you're talking about 52 trips in and 52 trips out. So if you distinguish between trucks, I think counsel person was using the phrase trucks. So if you look at it that way, it's 52 trucks or.
104 trips.
Trips.
Okay. Any other questions?
Chris, Mr. Chris. Chris.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Chris.
Yes.
Hey, are you?
I'm doing fine. How are you guys doing?
Good. We were provided with this packet here.
Yes.
Is this a requirement for them to complete or this is just for information?
What do you mean by complete?
There's a page, I think, the app, you know, I can't see here. The Agent Attorney's Campaign Disclosure Statement, it was signed, but it actually wasn't filled out.
Oh, yes, so I mean, it is necessary for it to be complete. Is it? Yeah. So I mean, technically it's, yes, yes, ma'am. You, you are, you are correct. It is complete, but I, like I say, I, I understand what you're saying. Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
I'm trying to, please make a clarification for me. He, he just indicated that it was already zoned in industry, but here we also, this is a rezoning from single family. So is that a correct statement?
No. So he's indicating that it is a future land use character of industrial.
Okay.
So the current zoning is single family home, but in the. So the current zoning is single-family home, but in the comprehensive plan, they identified that property as a future land use for industrial, is to be developed over time.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, we are now in, in a board discussion. Comments?
It was expressed how many trucks coming in and how limited the trucks is, are. If it's not profitable for you to be at that location, probably you can consider another location if there's such a limited number of trucks coming to and far. And also, personally, I just, I don't have an issue with green space. Everything doesn't have to be developed if they've had it in their family for 45 years. There's no issue with having green space for the community.
I, I really don't look at the number of trucks, but what's important to look at is the number of trips.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't matter how many trucks there are, but, so we're considering that, we're considering 104. One of the criteria for rezoning in, in the code 20616A1 is that such proposed use shall not detrimentally impact or alter nearby properties. So you have to look at that in the zoning, rezoning. In my opinion, I think this proposal does detrimentally impact the nearby properties. I have concerns about this rezoning based on that criteria.
I concur with that, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments or motions?
I move that we vote to deny the rezoning from R1, single-family residential, to M1 limited industrial for 1945 Sigmund Road.
Motion to deny.
I'll second.
Second, but Tom, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Moving on to item R2. It's 2294 Iris Drive, rezoning case 202210, request to rezone from C2 general commercial to RM residential multifamily for 129-unit attached townhome development. Parcel is 01001-00007. The size is 12.94 acres. The applicant is Battle Law PC.
Giving again to planning commissioners, second case that we heard this evening is 2294 Iris Drive, rezoning case 22-10. The subject, subject property again is 2294 Iris Drive. The applicant is Battle Law. They're looking to rezone 12.94 acres from R2, I mean, from C2 to RM for a multifamily for 129 townhome unit. Currently on the, on the, this is, this is the future land use of the subject property. Again, it has the future land use category of mixed-use, mixed-use employment center located to the, the west of, of the subject property is again a parcel, well, I'm sorry saying, parcels located to the west and south of, of the subject property has both of the future land use character area of mixed-use. Located southern portion of the property is again, commercial and office institutional future character areas. This is the current zoning of the subject property. Again, the current property has C2 general commercial zoning classification. Again, located to the west of the subject property is again, is a property zone commercial. Located to the southwest of the subject property are residential zone properties. Again, to the southeast is a commercial and office institutional zone properties. Oops, sorry. This is just an aerial photo to kind of give you, kind of give you a better idea of where the property is located. Located to the southern, certain intersection of Iris Drive and McDaniel Mill Road, located to the southern portion of the property is St. James Charles subdivision, and further down are established single-family subdivisions located to the southern portion. If you head up north, you are heading towards DeKalb County. The summary of, of this application, again, this application is adjacent to existing multifamily residential zone properties. Current proposed density will be 9.9 units or 10 units per acre. Is located along a major collective road. Access points will be located off Iris Drive. A traffic impact study was, was submitted and also showed that there's no significant issues when it comes to level of service or, or traffic impact on, on the subject property. Oops, sorry, went too fast. This is again, the site plan showing the, the current proposed site, site development of the subject property. The applicant has indicated that there will be three parks. One pocket park will be in the center of the location of the development, located to both, both in northwest, northeast of the property. There are going to be two small parks, and there's a small dog park located on the western side of the, of the property. Again, there are several, there's a petition found located to the southern western portion of the property, as well as located to the northern side of the property. That one indicated that there will be a landscape buffer along Iris Drive to kind of, trying to beautify and create a more appeasing aesthetics for the, for the property. Advocate, so the other county departments have reviewed this application. The only outstanding comment from other departments indicated that there isn't any concurrently, currently there aren't any sewer capacity for this, for this property, I mean, or for this proposal. However, the applicant has spoken to our county water resources office, and they are indicating, they are indicating to staff that they are working on a lift station or a pump station that will be, should be greenlit in early February or March of 2023. So therefore, there will be capacity for this development if you shoot, if it does get approval for rezoning. So again, just to let you know, so, and again, in your packet, comments from water resources said there weren't any sewer capacity, but I confirmed today with the engineering department, there will be capacity, but not currently at this time. Again, it projected to have capacity in early February or March of 2023. So therefore, staff does recommend approval of this application with 22 conditions, not to kind of read all through them. They are in, located in your packet as, if you want to kind of look through and, and have any questions of staff. And applicant is here too, as well.
In the past, some of the requirements for these townhomes, and this is in this proposal about putting in two-car garages?
Yes, there's, there are, they are indicating they will have two-car garages as well. I think there is, I believe, if I might have been mistaken, I thought in application there were a mixture of, of front entry and rear entry, of, of, I mean, buildings as well.
I didn't see that in the, the conditions, though, I was saying, you know.
I will, I will make a note of that, sorry.
Did you say what the capacity of the pumping station was?
Yeah, so currently, right now, they are, have, the county has a limited sewer capacity agreement with DeKalb County. Right now, they are at this limit, but the county is working on creating a lift station to increase capacity at this time. Speaking to, to water resources, again, they have said they are currently working on that. So, and by the time of February or March of 2023, they should have capacity for, for this development.
So you're saying the capacity of the proposed lift station would be sufficient?
Yes, sir, yeah. That, that was indicated to me today.
Other questions? We'll now hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Michelle Battle with Battle Law, 3562 Habersham at Northlake, Tucker, Georgia 30084. I'm going to wait for Chris to put up the PowerPoint. Thank you. I'll try not to be too redundant. Chris has done a great job of showing the site, so I'm going to kind of move through the PowerPoint, so you see where we are located here off of Iris, near McDaniel Mill. As Chris already indicated, we are currently zoned C2 and adjacent to property that is currently developed for two separate apartment complexes, St. James and St. Clair. Go to the next slide. We have here that we are in the mixed-use employment center land use designation, and so our rezoning to RM is appropriate. And this is just showing where the site is located with the site plan superimposed over top of it. And you can see here, the two subdivision, two apartment complexes are immediately south of the site. I can tell you that St. James was built in 1997, and St. Clair, they are all owned by the same property owner, was built in 2000. On the site plan is shown here, Chris has gone over it. We are excited about this project and believe that it is an appropriate use for this location. When we're looking at the surrounding area, particularly around Sigmund Road, and looking at the quality of apartment complexes in the area, we know that they are much older complexes. There's not been really any new apartment complexes built in the area. We prefer the townhome configuration. We believe that that is better for a host of reasons, including having fewer people kind of grouped in one building, also allowing for garages to be located. Again, we'll have two-car garages on this site so that we'll have less cars in the, in the drive aisles. We do provide for visitor parking, as you can see throughout the complex. I believe we've got roughly 41 visitor parking spaces throughout the community. We do have the amenity areas as shown. I will point out that staff has mentioned in its condition number 23 that we would have a pool and cabana. That is not shown, and we are not seeking to do a pool and cabana, so we would ask for that to be removed. This is intended to be a multifamily community, and so condition number 13, where we talk about the final plat, covenants and conditions, there will be no final plat because this will not be a platted community. Again, it is intended to be a multifamily community. We are seeking to rezone to RM, so we're not hiding that it is a multifamily community adjacent to other multifamily communities. But again, we believe a better layout, a better opportunity to provide housing would definitely be at a higher price point in terms of the rental values. This is a market rate project, and believe, again, that it is suitable for the area in which it is proposed. We can go to the next slide, please. Let's give you some idea of the elevations that we are looking at. The units will be between 1,400 to 1,800 square feet. They are three-bedroom units. We can go to the next slide. Just keep it moving through there. And here's a picture of the outside elevations of the buildings, but that will be a two-car garage. We did have a traffic study that was conducted, and other than at the entrance into the drive, actually coming out on, to Iris Drive where there may be some heavy queuing on site, otherwise the traffic study did indicate that there was no significant issues and that it would be working at a respectable service level in 2025. Again, these units will be 1,400 to 1,800 square feet, will have three bedrooms. There will be two-car garages available. We do show that amenities, as Chris pointed out, throughout the project, we have both rear entry and front entry units. And if this were approved, we would be looking at initial lease dates probably in 20, now that we know that the, the pump station, we will be looking in 2024 for the project to, to be up and available for lease. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Look confused when you said there's not a final plat. There is a final plat.
It, it's not a platted townhome community unless I'm misreading something from staff. We won't be plating it like it would be for fee simple lots, but to the extent that, right, so there, go ahead.
No, she, she is correct. Since they're all be owned by one ownership, the request of the plating would not be necessary at this time.
So where are you going to put the conditions that you recommended?
Oh, those, I'm sorry, again, those are, are, I, I might have forgotten to take that condition out. Again, I, like I was saying, I was trying to go through them and try to revise those comments, especially when it concerned the plats, especially the covenants and, and things of that nature of ownership and so forth.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I have one question. I was looking at the impact to the schools.
Yes, ma'am.
It looks like, I think, I'm assuming this is elementary 839, left with the capacity, middle 133, which high school has a little bit more, 200, 271. Does this include, we already approved a plat that was a little bit further across Sigmund Road. Do you know whether or not this, this capacity includes that particular?
I'm not certain, ma'am.
I don't think it does because they do it from year to year. I just used to work in a school district, so it's projection one year out, yeah.
Speaking of school districts, my question revolves around the letter received from the Rockdale County Public Schools in May references the three schools for the area, Shoal Creek, Rockdale High School, and Edwards Middle School. But in the technical review sheet, it's got three different schools. It's got Shoal Creek, the same, but then it's got Davis Middle and Heritage. Which one applies to this project, and do we know if the capacity?
I believe it would be the one that was in the letter from the school board.
I believe the school board was updating the way they, they do their modeling and projection of the impact of schools, so I honestly, I would probably go with the technical review sheet comments.
The technical version versus the one from the school?
Yeah, yes, yes, sir, because we sent it to Rockdale County School Board for, for their comments.
So...
It's 271.
There's some miscommunication somewhere there as far as what schools zone they're in, and whether or not they've got enough capacity to hold it for 215. And their technical review sheet also refers to 129 townhomes, not 215.
That's correct. We reduced the number.
So it's 129?
It's 129. We're at 9.9 units per acre.
So only, okay, I misread a number, I'm sorry. It's 129 attached units.
What's your comments about the, any about the school capacity?
Well, number one, school capacity would not be a basis for denying the request. We certainly know that there will be children that be generated out of this project, and, you know, the hope is that the school board will continue to address capacity issues as growth and development happens in the area. We have had no, you know, real growth, certainly from a multifamily perspective in this area for quite some time. So the hope would certainly be that the school board would prepare for additional students by either looking at additional facilities or whatever their growth plan is, but that's the purpose of doing this, is that now they have, you know, a year and a half, two years to start looking at the increased capacity within this area, and by going through this process, they've got advance notice of that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anybody sign up to speak? Do you have anybody sign up to speak?
Yes, I have one on card, but I believe I have another one. I believe somebody's just coming in late to actually come speak, so we have one definitely in opposition. That is Ms. Carol Mills. Well, she marked opposed, but she has some special conditions that she requests that you guys consider, so Ms. Carol Mills.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Carol Mills. Address 957 North Main Street, Conyers, Georgia. I am the managing partner of Chalk Creek Holdings LLC, which is the property owner of 65 acres contiguous and abutting with the property owned by Stone Lee Properties. Our concern with the proposed development is related to the setback and the buffer zone requirements for this proposed project. We are requesting the approval of two 50-foot buffers and the addition of conditional requirements of the developer for the construction of two security privacy fences and dense vegetation planted in relation to the property boundary lines. The recommendation of a 50-foot buffer is stated in the staff report of Conyers-Rockdale Planning Commission meeting dated 9/22/2022, rezoning case number 2022-10, page 3, number 1, letter H, which states, "Where abutting incompatible uses or districts, a buffer is required in conformance with Chapter 328, Article I of the UDO," which states, "A 50-foot buffer when abutting C2 zoning district." The construction of two 8-foot security privacy fences on the property boundary lines would reinforce the buffer aspect and the security factor of this project. The fences should be aesthetically attractive and incorporate appropriate natural material. Additional dense vegetation planted and aligning the fences would serve as an additional natural design element for privacy. These property boundary lines are on the right of the property, referring to the map, which I'm sure you have. It's actually not a map, it's a site plan for the development. And where these property boundaries lie are facing the project on the far right and on the backside of the property are the boundary lines I'm referring to. The security privacy fences will also serve as protection of encroachment by residents unto the abutting property. This protects the liability concerns of Chalk Creek Holdings as owners of contiguous property on the two sides of the proposed multifamily development. Both of the boundary line segments of the multifamily development contiguous and abutting are property of multifamily housing units, and if you look at the site plan again, there's 12 units on one side facing the project to the right, and on the backside, they're 18 for a total of 30 units. And those 30 units, the back of those units are the boundary on the property that's contiguous that I'm referring to, that I represent. These legitimate and important aspects for property buffers are in relation to the future development of a quality positive project on the contiguous 65-acre tract of property owned by Chalk Creek Holdings. Rockdale County has designated this entire corridor as a gateway area for the county. The approval of two buffer zones, addition of two security privacy fences, and additional vegetation are critical conditional requirements to ensure the safety and the security of the development in relation to the contiguous property, as well as establish a standard in the design and aesthetic aspect for future growth and development in this area. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
I believe that's all public comment cards for this application.
All right, thank you.
If we wanted to... We'll just have everybody just come up and we'll fill it out. Yes, yes, we're ready to fill it out, yes.
Tammy Schaller, 1119 Oxford Drive. I'm looking at the school report, and if you look at Rockdale High School, it's telling you that the projected enrollment for 2023 is 1,974. Their max capacity is 2,000. They have no more room for any students in that school district. If you look at Shoal Creek, they already have eight classroom pods and six mobile classrooms. What does that tell us about our overcrowding in our school? The same thing with Edwards Middle. They already have three mobile classrooms. We can't continue to put these multifamily homes in our community without planning. It takes five years to get a school out of the ground, because you got to find the property, then you got to start excavating, you got to get quotes. We're not even talking about adding any new schools. Nobody's talking about that. We're also not talking about the impact on our fire department, on our sheriff's office. We had a fire recently at a church, and our fire chief told us that if we had had another fire in Rockdale County, we would have had to go outside of our county for assistance. So we have to look at all the things, all of these things when we're looking at this development, not just what's happening in a two-hour, in a two-mile area. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I oppose, I'm sorry.
We'll now hear from rebuttal from the agent.
There are certainly challenges with schools throughout the Rockdale County area. As this county continues to grow, as more development comes, it is the school board's responsibility to figure out how to provide adequate schooling and facilities for the students who are coming. There are many districts, I'm sure, where there are new subdivisions, multifamily, townhome communities, whatever, coming in, and these are issues that they have to grapple with. We can't stop development because of that particular issue, and again, it is not a basis for a denial of a zoning. But what we know is that they are being given information in a timely manner when they have these types of projects that come through, so that they can look to determine what they need to do to do expansion of their school facilities, and that is their responsibility as a school board, that is what they get their property taxes for in order to help with those school expansions. As far as the conditions that were proposed, I'm a little, I guess, maybe I'm missing something, but the property that I believe that she was referencing is Zone C2. I don't see anything in the zoning ordinance that requires us to have a 50-foot buffer adjacent to C2, nor does the C2 have to have a buffer 50 feet adjacent to us. I think that the site plan that we have, we do show a buffer on the one side, or a setback on the other side. So if we could get some clarity about exactly what she was referencing, I don't know if it's problematic, but I don't believe that there is any requirement of a 50-foot buffer unless there is something that I have missed in the ordinance, and that's certainly possible. So I'd ask, maybe staff can get some clarity on that point.
We'll make one comment. In our rezoning standards, Unified Development Art of Section 238, 4G1, one of the things you need to look, you look at is whether the proposed rezoning resulted in use that would cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. So schools is one of the criteria we do look at in terms of rezonings, and part of the review standards. But more importantly, I have a question for you. In the, in the application, there's one of the page, page 6 of 13, justification of the rezoning request. There's four items. I do not see the answers to those in the packet they were given. Perhaps we are missing them. Do you have any understanding?
We've provided the updated SOI to make sure that we had all of the information requested and required.
What the information that we provide for you, it should be SOI update. Again, that information was provided by the applicant. It had everything that we assumed was the missing information that you had, as we spoke before regarding the justification. It's staff's standpoint that that justification is just a redundant of answers and questions that is, that is used for, that does not use specifically for the zoning criteria or the zoning standards, which the applicant did provide those answers. So the staff is, would be more concerned if the applicant didn't provide the answers and questions to the zoning standard than the actual justifications. Again, that is just a duplication of what the applicant has to provide in their letter of intent, is the justification, is not justification, but the standards of review. The justification, again, is not really germane or something that you'll be using to make your, your decision based off of. That's just supplemental information that would be helpful to kind of fill out the application, but the most important thing is the applicant stating their answers to the standards of review.
So you're standing, if the application is incomplete in terms of what's required, you don't feel that's required, even though it's currently part of the application?
I, yes, sir. From my standpoint, I think that, I think the justification would be not required. It's something that staff is going to remove in the future, because again, it's just supplemental information that's provided, that could be, that could be provided in the letter of intent, which most applicants do. They provide that kind of justification, because they expound upon that in the standards of review criteria, which is listed in our, in our code. But the justifications, again, are just some supplemental writings that's a part of our application, as, as you see in our, on your packet.
Is that acceptable to counsel, that... If it is, I'm fine.
As is explained, board, it seems that it's maybe persuasive, but not process. And so I kind of, I would distinguish between the letter of intent wherein an applicant will provide justification, reasons, and persuasive kind of impact to sway the board to their position, however it's not required by law, is what I understand. And so when you're looking at the legal requirements or the criterion, I believe the department is saying that they have been satisfied.
Okay, as long as it's okay with you, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Excuse me, Sean, can you turn up their feed to this speaker?
Thank you.
I have one comment that I would like to also make, in reference to, you're referencing that their zoning is currently C2, and there would be no requirement, there was no requirement in C2 to meet the conditions that were requested by the abutted property owner, Mrs. Mills. Whether they're part of the requirement or not, if we wanted to add those to the conditions, we could do that, couldn't we not?
Yes.
Thank you.
Let me piggyback off that, Chris, because some of what Ms. Mills had in here is in your recommendations, but it's not in the specified order that she is requesting it in necessarily, like the trees and the, you know, that kind of thing. So that, you know, do we have the option of doing that also?
As, as the board, you have the option to amend and alter conditions and add or remove conditions. That's within your purview, too, when you make an approval or denial of something, you can add conditions on there or remove conditions as you see fit, because you're recommending those conditions to the, to the, to the board commissioners.
I can't get past the school thing by myself, because we're hearing another piece tonight. If we approve both of these, it would be at 277 units.
Absolutely.
And the ones that were pulled off tonight were much more, and our school system, as the chairman indicated, has to be considered when we're approving the building of residence that will house, as you put it, would generate future children. So that's my comment on that.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a comment? Yeah, I've been really looking over some numbers for our community right now. We have, and, you know, I just think this all has to be considered in all of this. We have 2,800 units in the pipeline in the county. We have 1,800 units in the city. That includes multi-townhouses, seniors, whatever. So that's 4,600 units already in our pipeline. We, the way I read this for the schools, which, yeah, the school department has to deal with this, but we, we have an impact we can make or not make here. So I read this as other city-county development impacting capacity is not in those numbers above, that those are what's coming for them on this sheet. So that being said, if we extrapolate this out somewhat, we're already out of capacity, and that's a huge concern for me. And like they said, it does take five years to get a school up and running. And so if you're in a zoning that's already acceptable for this, that's one thing I can do not about that. But I think that we have to look at the impact. Across the nation, 20% of our new home buyers, this doesn't pertain to her because it's rental, are off the table because of the increase in rates. I'm not sure what the impact's going to be eight months down the road. So I think, I'm not opposed to development, I'm not opposed to rentals, and I'm not opposed to townhomes. I've been in them all. But I think looking at this and seriously considering becomes very important. I don't want us to be a year down the road and have projects that, that aren't happening because of things changing in our economics, and that's, that's my concerns with all of this.
All right, we're still in, in board discussion. So any comments? Any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that we deny the approval of item R2 at 22494 Iris Drive, rezoning case number 2022-10, request to rezone from C2 general commercial to RM residential multifamily for 129 unit attached townhome development.
Motion to deny? For a second?
Second.
Second. We're in discussion. Again, one of your major concerns is the overcapacity of schools.
Yes.
Okay, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Moving on, item R3, 0 Glen Road, rezoning case number 202212, a request to rezone R1 single-family residential to RM residential multifamily for a 148-unit townhome development. Parcel 0740010021, size 37.2 acres. Applicant is Moore Bass Consulting, Inc.
Chairman, I would like to kind of point out an error on staff part in the, on the agenda. The applicant is requesting a flume, or a request as well. It is actually in your packet, and we did legally advertise the request, but we forgot to actually include it on the agenda, so I apologize for that mistake.
I was gonna say that you...
The flume, they asked me for a flume... The flume, they asked me for a flume change as well. It's actually in your packet.
Oh, okay.
So we forgot to put it on the actual agenda. So I apologize for that.
Okay. So to clarify, it's a, it's a future land use map amendment for medium-density residential to high-density residential. And then a rezoning request from R1 single-family to RM residential multifamily for a 148-unit townhome development. And in this case, we will need two, two votes, one for the future land use map and one for the rezoning.
Good evening, Commissioners. Again, the applicant is Moore Bass Consulting. The applicant is requesting a future land use map amendment and rezoning from R1 single-family to residential multifamily and from medium-density to high-density for the construction of 148 town, 148, 148-unit townhome project. The subject property again is Glen Road. Again, this is the zoning map showing the current zoning is R1. The property, the zoning, the subject property is surrounded by R1 zoning property as well as R2 family zoning district located to the west of the subject property and located to the south of the subject property. Further down along Glen Road is limited industrial zoning district as well as to the north of the subject property. This is the current future land use map of the subject property. Again, the star indicates the subject property. It's showing a class, a future land use character area, medium-density located to, adjacent to the property again is medium-density, but further down Old Covington Highway is a high-density, high-density future character area. Then located to the north is another future, another high-density residential character area. The black indicates the city limits of Conyers and then located to the further down along Glen Road is another limited industrial future character area. This is just an aerial photo to kind of give you a better understanding exactly where the subject property is located. Abutting subject property is the Westberry Park subdivision and then across the street along, adjacent across the street from Old Covington, Old Covington Road is the Old Covington Junction subdivision. Abutting subject property is the Ball Rock Baptist Church. To summary of this, of the subject, of the application, again, they're looking to construct 148 townhome units, is adjacent to, to existing, or I should say is nearby existing multifamily and single-family projects, is located along the Collector Road, Old Covington. Access points will be along Old Covington and Glen Road. The proposed density for this, for this project will be four units per acre. And there are existing floodplains, lake and streams on the locate, on the subject property. This is a floodplain map that's provided by stormwater to show the actual location of the lake on the subject property. If you can kind of tell, if you see the hatchet, that indicates a future, future flood, future flood areas and then other, as well as the current wetlands and flood, flood area. Again, this water body crosses, encompass both sites. The applicant has indicated that there will be, site development will be south of the, of the lake. And, and they try to indicate, they will try to limit the encroachment into the floodplain. But it is, but it has indicated they will be encroaching into the 75-foot, no imperious setback buffer. As you can kind of see from the site plan, again, they show the encroachment along the lake with their amenity area. And then as further, further up from the amenity area, there's encroachment for their stormwater detention along the lake area. And then further encroachment, it looks probably towards the western, western part of the property. The property, the, the, they have indicated there's going to be a 50-foot buffer between Rock Ball, I mean, Rock, I mean, sorry, the church located to the west of the subject property. There is, there is required 50-foot buffer due to income, due to the different zoning classifications. So that will be required if the proposed, proposed development is, is approved. Again, access points will be along Glen Road and Old Covington. They have indicated there'd be a park, a park located to the western part of the, of the site. Again, applicant has indicated they will try not to impact the current water bodies on, on the subject property. Therefore, so that staff does recommend approval of this application with the following, I believe it's 14, 14 conditions. The applicant is here if you have any questions for them. And, and staff is, is ready to answer any questions therefore.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
I didn't see a 5% rental clause in this at all. Is that there? Did I miss it?
I'm sorry, what did you say ma'am?
The 5% rental clause?
Yes.
I didn't see it in there.
Yes, it's at the, it should be at the end. It's number 14 on the PowerPoint presentation. Again, is, there are some recommended changes that's in your staff report. So what's in the PowerPoint are the new changes. I didn't have time to print those out. So it's number 14 on the page if, in your, your PowerPoint presentation.
I see it there on the, yeah.
It's the PowerPoint.
It's hard to see the bottom. That's where it is. Okay. It's there. Okay. Any other questions for staff? All right, we now hear from the agent.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Christman. I am an engineer with Moore Bass Consulting representing our client. Tonight, let's see. And I just want to clarify probably right out the gate, this tract is a little over 37 acres. We are proposing because of the natural lake and because of the streams, we don't have any intention of encroaching in that 75-foot buffer. So this was a concept plan that we did. We will do a formal environmental study where we'll do stream analysis, wetlands and so on and so forth, and then we'll add those buffers from that. So this is a concept plan based on GIS data, but I just wanted to clarify that if that was a concern, that's definitely something that we will absolutely adhere to as we go forward. But as Chris said, this property is roughly 27 acres on the west side of Glen Road and 10 acres on the east side. Regarding existing utilities, there is a lift station on our east side that we show. There's water along Old Covington, so utilities is easily accessible to this site. We are proposing because of course, the client for a high-density is only proposing four units an acre. And we do want to keep the natural site as Chris mentioned. We don't want to go anywhere near the lake. We want to protect the streams. We want to keep the buffers. We want for our use and for our proposed owner's use, we want to be able to keep it as, as green as possible. One of the things we have is we're going to have landscape strips. If you can use the, the next slide, Chris, please, zoom in a little bit and make it easier to see. This is along Glen Road with the existing lake. We are proposing to have that as our amenity area. And again, this is shown for conceptual purposes. When we do a final design, we'll, we'll add buffers in, in the 75-foot offset. We also have, I think we're proposed to have 49 off-street parking. We're proposing 52 because we do want to make sure that off-street parking is not something that would be a concern. Glen Road, if you've ever driven that road, it is a very narrow road and we are proposing right in and right out. We would not want to add any extra traffic on Glen Road. The next slide, please. This is the entrance, which our main entrance we would propose would be off of Old Covington Road. And then with our units, one of our conditions was that we would have no more than six units at a time and there was some different offsets. Also, we would have five-foot sidewalks throughout the development, which is of course, is no problem. And then on the right side of this is where you see the lift station that's on our eastern side of our property and where we would tie in. Next slide, please. This is a proposed elevation. I stood in front of you guys, or I guess zoomed in front of you guys back in February or March. Our client's doing one development closer to the interstate. This is a luxury townhome. This is the elevation of what you would see with the sidewalks and how the units are put together. The next one, I think is the last one, Chris. And then this is just a street view of how we propose to have the units done. So again, luxury townhomes, four units an acre. We are proposing to have over 26 units of open, I mean, 26 acres of open space on 37 acres. So we're only required by law to have, or by the code to have 400 square feet per unit, which would be roughly an acre and a half. And we're proposing 26 and a half acres of open space. So we want to keep this as natural as possible. So that's it for me unless there's questions.
Just one question. What's the price point?
It's going to be about 315 per unit.
Thank you.
And about 1,600 square feet.
Your number of bedrooms per unit?
Three.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
After you've completed the development, are you planning to use the existing water sources and floodplains as part of your stormwater runoff?
What we will do is we'll actually, we'll have proposed, yeah, I was going to say a map. Tells, the picture says a thousand words, right? So we'll have proposed units. So the one that's on the right side, the large one exists currently. So what we'll do is we'll have water quality, so we'll keep it clean at all of our, we'll have water quality, detention, everything upstream, and then we'll eventually flow into the existing streams. But based on the codes, we'll have to keep it back and keep it as clean as it is today and detain no more than we had before, so. I've tried to do ponds before and use existing ponds and it just, it's too hard with geotech and everything else. We try to just have our own ponds upstream and then eventually discharge to the existing.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Sure.
We'll now hear from those who've signed up to speak.
Hello? Oh, there we go. The first person to speak in opposition is Mr. Scott Tanner.
Good evening, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to, to speak before you tonight. I am a resident of Glendale Acres. I live less than a mile from the proposed site. And I'm going to change what I was going to say a little bit. As I was watching the presentation, this, this project's a little bit more troubling than, than even I realized. This is going to require, as you know, a change to the future land use map and a rezoning. I mean, certainly as a resident of the area, this isn't anything that I think I should reasonably expect to, to happen. It is zoned R1. I have, I expect that, you know, a reasonable expectation is that that's what it would be. Now selfishly, of course, I would love it to not be developed at all. It's a beautiful piece of property, but I understand development will come. However, changing the future land use map and a rezoning to multifamily is, is really incompatible. As I drive around Rockdale County where I've lived for over 20 years, I see a lot of development going in. In fact, it seems like in this county, the only thing anybody's interested in building is townhomes, apartments and logistics centers, to be honest with you. But when I see a lot of these townhomes going in, they make sense to me. For example, the one that seems to be almost built out that's behind the BJ's Wholesale Club, that kind of makes sense to me. It's close to a lot of amenities. It's close to transportation corridors. It's easily accessible by Salem Road or 138. That kind of makes sense. But contrast that where we are, which I would describe as a semi-rural area, and it just doesn't fit. It's kind of a square peg round hole thing. As the developer's agent mentioned, Glen Road is an extremely curvy road with no shoulders. Jeez Mill is not much better. Old Covington's a little bit straighter, but what's not kind of mentioned is that there's a, like a two-way stop at Glen and Old Covington right there. And that's going to put a tremendous amount of traffic on there. In fact, there's a, a church not very far away that before the pandemic, when they were fully, you know, doing in-person meetings, would completely, not ruin, but, but would really, really disrupt the, the amount of cars completely congest the area. And that's with that church doing a really good job at directing traffic out of both ways to try to mitigate that. So I'm going to make sure that I turn the, the bulk of my time over to the, the people behind me. But I just want to, do appreciate the opportunity to voice my concerns and it basically comes down to the fact that this does not fit. I will of course remind you that there was another townhome development that did manage to get approved and they are pushing dirt around right now, right adjacent to it. That, in my opinion, was one too many. This one is, is way too much. It just doesn't fit in the area. And to be clear, I'm not against townhome developments or apartments or multifamily or any of that. It all has a place. And I don't even mind if that place is particularly close. The one that I mentioned behind the BJ's Wholesale Club is quite close. But there needs to be a balance. There needs to be a balance of high, middle and, and more starter type homes. There needs to be a balance of townhomes. What I'm, what I'm seeing is just a glut of townhomes and that type of multifamily development and, and also putting them in places that, that really don't make sense. And this is one that does not make sense. In addition to the wetland situation that I've just heard about, this one's very troubling to me and I ask that you do not approve this, this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person to speak is Mr. Martin Brody.
Good evening, Planning Committee, Commission Board. I handed out a packet earlier and y'all can refer to that as I speak. My name's Martin Brody and I live at 280 Glen Road. My property and three other homeowners' properties are adjacent to the 37-acre parcel at the corner of Glen Road and Old Covington Road. Moore Bass Consulting, Inc. has requested to rezone from R1 to RM. We argue that bookending Glen Road with another multifamily development, y'all know that there's one already underway on, on Glen Road and Jeez Mill Road, a 250 condominium complex that put red water into our pond in February and March because they were out of compliance with BMPs and polluted our pond with contaminated stormwater. And Director Rutledge is very aware of this. I've sent her numerous emails with photos documenting this and the stormwater's aware of this as well. Okay. So this proposal would add an additional 148 townhomes totaling almost 400 units on a single-family neighborhood road that's only nine-tenths of a mile long and would add a second entrance exit to Glen Road only a half a mile from the Rockland Homes condominium entrance exit is inconsistent with your comprehensive plan to quote, preserve quality of life and quote, preserve and enhance existing residential neighborhoods and quote, improve the sustainability of existing residential neighborhoods and quote, preserve and protect the character and viability of existing neighborhoods. Moore Bass Consulting, Inc.'s design plan shows an ingress egress on a double L-line blind S-curve, which is a safety issue. Also, there's no, been no traffic study has been done yet. The proposed 37-acre parcel under rezoning consideration includes a pond, Smith Pond. Smith Pond and our pond that I live on called Golden Pond connected to Smith Pond are classified by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service National Wetland Inventory as capital P, capital U, capital B, capital H, little h, wetlands. Their mission is to analyze and report on status and trends where wetlands and related habitats are vulnerable to change, loss or degradation, either man-made or natural, and promote sound decision-making and policy information through dissemination of wetlands data and information through a variety of media. We argue that approval of the rezoning request would be inconsistent with your comprehensive plan to quote, make rezoning decisions consistent with the comprehensive plan and quote, decide the necessary programs and regulations to protect and preserve open space and sensitive lands throughout the county in a coordinated way and quote, maintain the distinction between conservation areas and developed areas and quote, direct transportation system improvements away from environmentally sensitive areas. According to the Rockdale County webpage titled Regulatory Compliance, quote, "The Clean Water Act is a federal law that established environmental programs to protect the Water Act is a federal law that established environmental programs to protect the nation's waters from pollutants and authorizes the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to develop, implement, and enforce regulations consistent with this law. A leading source of disimpairment is polluted stormwater runoff, which we've already experienced from the other project on the Jeez Mill side." And I don't even want to go there right now with that. When unmanaged, this water pollution can result in a loss of aesthetic value, destruction of fish, wildlife, and aquatic habitats. On the same webpage, there's a code of ordinances specifically under Section 324-2, Protection of Wetlands. And that's what these are. These are wetlands, and y'all can see that. Subsection A, Purpose and Intent. Pursuant to OCGA 12-2-8 and the DNR, Environmental Protection Division's Rules for Environmental Planning Criteria, this section establishes regulations to promote the wise use of wetlands and protect them from alterations that will significantly affect or reduce their primary functions for water quality, floodplain, and erosion control, groundwater recharge, aesthetic natural areas, and wildlife areas. Subsection B, Wetlands' Development Permit Requirements. No activity or use except those identified in subsection C shall be allowed into wetlands without issuance of a local development permit. Local permits will be issued only if the proposed use is in compliance with the requirements of the underlying zoning district in this section. Furthermore, if the area of proposed development is located within 100 feet of the development's boundaries as established by figure Roman numeral 4-2 of the Rockdale County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers delineation is required as a condition of a Section 404 permit of the Clean Water Act. If wetlands are altered or degraded, mitigation to offset losses, like what happened from the other project into our ponds, a wetland habitat, it was degraded because of pollution, because they didn't follow BMPs. Mitigation to offset losses may be required as a condition of Section 404-1 permit. Local development permits will not be issued until after any necessary Section 404 permits have been secured. Subsection C lists the permitted uses, none of which include a townhouse development. We argue that allowing 148 townhome development to be built on top of a wetland habitat is inconsistent with promoting the wise use of wetlands pursuant to the Clean Water Act and your regulatory compliance wetland protection ordinance. Therefore, we respectfully ask that you deny Moore Bass Consulting, Inc.'s request. In closing, I'd like to quote Chairman Weinstein. "We should not be known as a townhome community, but rather be known as a community that has townhomes as one of its housing options. Let us step back, stop, and plan sensibly for our future growth." Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Dr. Sharon Carter.
My address is 2162 Blueberry Lane. I'm a resident of Westbury Park. I'm here on behalf of myself and Westbury Park community, as well as the residents on the end of Jeez Mill, to express strong opposition to a residential case 2022-2, which is a request by Moore Bass Consulting, Incorporated, to rezone a 37.2-acre parcel as zero Glen Road. This parcel just happened, and I was informed that it runs into my backyard. And I bought my house because I wanted a home, and I didn't want neighbors in that close to my backyard. In addition, may I add the hearing letter was kind enough to inform me that I would also become an adjoining property owner, which is contrary to why I purchased a single-family home. I speak for myself and my neighbors. We do not want 148 townhomes in our backyard. While the local community may be unable to prevent development that in itself will be detrimental to the area, all residents in the Westbury Park community are completely opposed to the addition of multifamily housing that will cause traffic and safety problems, create even more problems with schools that are already over capacity, destroy local wildlife habitation, and potentially lower the property values of existing communities. To add, traffic and safety are pedestrians are major concerns. Traffic jams on Old Covington Highway to Interstate 20 already spans the distance with deceleration of lanes, and there has been a number of accidents at the intersection of Glen Road and Old Covington Highway. And rush hour is already immense. Building 148 units will certainly make traffic more horrific. Traffic from the new units will disproportionately surge during morning and evening rush hours, causing traffic issues during critical times for near-existing neighborhoods located on Jeez Mill, Old Covington Highway, and those near Old Salem Road. Schools in the area are already reported at overcapacity, and the council should not approve multifamily dwellings that creates or exacerbates a situation that will cause school concurrency to fail because it was approved and because it approved a rezoning request. Not to mention, rezoning has already been approved and groundbroken for the purpose of multifamily units at the far end of Glen Road. Of uber importance, property values will decrease if multifamily homes are built. Not to mention, multifamily dwellings are inconsistent with the neighborhoods developed in the area. Just as important, I was disappointed that a few notices were mailed to my neighbors. Many of them did not receive notifications of this meeting that we will have new neighbors in our backyard, and I suspect it was possibly done on purpose. In closing, I urge you to please disapprove the proposed rezoning and for this particular request and for all future requests. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's all that we have for in opposition.
All right. Thank you.
Is that?
Mr. Brody would like you to be able to address the planning commissioners again.
He's asking if that's acceptable.
Yes.
Chris, have you put up the overview of Moore Bass Consulting and all of the development of the townhomes?
The site plan, sir?
The site plan?
Yes, sir.
Do they have? Okay. Now, we live on the pond above Smith Pond, and you see the little finger coming out, the little blue finger coming out at the backside.
Mr. Brody, could you step up to the mic?
I'm sorry. Thank you. There's two ponds there, Smith Pond and then our pond, Golden Pond, at the very top of the slide. The backside of that proposed property has townhomes that look down directly onto my neighbor's backyard. And I ask y'all, and it's up on a hill, and it looks directly, I've been up there, I've hiked it, I know that whole area. I've lived there 25 years. The majority of that property slopes, is steep slopes, ravines, and draws. And there is no way that they're going to prevent contaminated stormwater going into those ponds and those streams with silt fences. They're going to have to do what they've done now on Glen Road and Jeez Mill Road after I got onto them and brought their attention, they weren't following BMPs. They shut the whole project down for two months, and they built a berm 30 feet high across the power easement from where I live that runs the entire power easement, and they put detention ponds back in there to prevent what happened in February and March from occurring again. If they don't do that with this, those ponds will be red again, I guarantee you. And I ask y'all, if this was your single-family neighborhood, residential neighborhood, would you want 400 units? 400 units? Each unit's going to have two cars, that's probably 800 cars? It's just, it's not the location for a townhome community. It's just not, especially since we've already got one on the other side of Glen. Glen's only less than a mile long, and it's a double yellow line. From Jeez Mill to Old Covington, it's a double yellow line. Thank you all very much.
Now hear from the agent rebuttal.
Thank you. Just a couple, I guess, pieces of clarification. If you could put the site plan back up. Perfect. For the lady that had mentioned on Blackberry Lane, just I want to clarify again to make sure. 27 acres is west of Glen Road, and on the area, the 10 roughly acres on the east side that is in you guys' backyard, we are not proposing anything on that side. So just wanted to clarify that. Also, just reiterating some of the things that I said earlier, we will have to do a traffic impact study, and of course, whatever it says and recommends, we will abide by. Also, want to clarify, we will have to do an environmental study, and it will have specific wetlands, it'll have, of course, all of the ponds and streams, buffers. We have to, as part of my professional license when I sign and seal something, I have to put BMPs or best management practices in, so I'm going to have to have disconnected downspouts, and I'm going to have to have enhanced swales and buyer retention areas, and like I mentioned earlier, ponds that will take all of that and then ultimately discharge in the streams. When I sign and seal the document, I have to say that I'm leaving it better than I did before. That's part of the hard work of what I have to do. So that is what we have to do as part of that. Now, the construction part and the enforcement part, I have to do seven-day letters, so we will be on-site as well. And obviously, eyes and ears of the neighbors help. That helps me. That's how we know things are going on on the projects. So I'm all for in participation and knowing what's going on. Let me see what other my notes. Let's see. Yes. Yeah, best management practices, environmental study, traffic study. We're a luxury apartment, like I said, 300,000-plus. And I think that's it.
All right. Any questions? Okay. We are now in board discussion.
The wetlands issue concerns me.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few concerns with this, and they're very similar to the ones before. I have a concern, number one, with the impact to the communities that already exist with their homes, and this is going to be multifamily homes. I have a concern with the schools. I have a concern with traffic. And I've added a concern, which is the natural wetlands now. So all of those are real concerns for me. Oh, there was one other one, safety. Yeah.
Which one?
Safety.
I concur with most of her comments on that. The wetlands issue bothers me most. It didn't seem that it was being addressed. You say you will address it, but it seems to already be an issue. I'm not sure, but the area looks to be a real issue for wetlands problem, and I think that's a situation that could present some problems on down the road.
When we're dealing with future land use map and rezoning, it requires more stringent scrutiny in terms of reviewing these applications. You're not only rezoning, but you're asked to go against the future land use plan. So you have to have a real good reason to do that, in my opinion. And I have concerns about this project. I have concerns about, and I've said this before, changing the future land use plan haphazardly to alter an area that wasn't designed to have this type of zoning. Any other comments and or motions? Be advised that we have two motions for the future land use plan amendment and the rezoning.
I think that it's very important that Rockdale County as a whole, we really got to address an impact study on the school systems, on what we're putting in the community. I wish we just put a halt on things because we can't continue to approve things if we haven't seen the impact of the things that are in development or the things that have already been approved. They're going to impact our neighborhoods. They're going to impact our school system, our fire department. It's going to have an impact. Do we know the impact? It's too much to know what the impact is. So I really, I'm opposed to continually approving things that we know intelligent, we're intelligent individuals to know that it's going to impact our schools. It's going to impact the way we live in Rockdale County, and I'm not sure if that's going to be a good thing. I think it may be a negative thing.
Any other comments? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we deny the rezoning request to rezone from R1, single-family residential to RM residential multifamily with the property located for rezoning case 2022-12.
If you don't mind, since this is a future land use plan amendment and a rezoning.
Do the future land use first?
Yeah. Can you withdraw your motion and?
All right. I withdraw that motion and make a motion that we deny the future land use request to amend the future land use map from medium-density residential to high-density residential in section 2022-12, reasonable case.
A second.
A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? All opposed? Motion passes. Now to the rezoning.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we deny the request to rezone the property from R1, single-family residential to RM residential multifamily.
Second.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed. All right. Moving on to item R6. This is 2051 Highway 138, future land use case 2022-04, amend the future land use category from medium-density residential to high-density residential. Rezoning case 2022-07, rezone from R1, single-family residential to RM residential multifamily. Parcel 090001-003B and 090001-0003, 25.26 acres. Applicant is PEC left.
Good evening, Commissioners. Again, the applicant is Planners and Engineers Collaborative. The applicant is requesting two motions, two applications to be heard this evening. One is to amend the future land use map from medium-density to high-density and to rezone from R1 to RM residential multifamily. The subject property is located at 2051 Highway 138. Just to be clarification, there is two tax parcels, as you indicated, is 090001-003B and 09001-003, for a total of 25.26 acres. This is the current zoning map of the subject, the current zoning of the subject property. Again, the property is zone M1, and then there's a small parcel that's indicated R1, single-family residential zone district. Again, it's a butts existing R1, single-family zone property. This is the future land use map of the subject property, indicating that the future land use, again, is medium-density residential. Everything located to the west of the subject property are medium-density, and then located to the southern portion is the city of Conyers. This is an aerial map of the subject property to indicate, to give you a better idea of where it is located. Again, it has frontage along Highway 138. It's property abuts Mountain Valley State subdivision, and then located north of the subject property is the First Baptist Church of Conyers. The summary of the application, again, The summary of the application, again, this applicant is looking to do a 215-unit town home development. The existing site is a paintball outdoor recreation facility. There is an existing creek on the subject property located towards the southern portion of the property, is adjacent to industrial properties in the city of Conyers. Access points will be along Highway 138. The applicant has expressed there might be a possible road extension to existing public right-of-way located to the southern portion of the site. This is the site plan of the subject property. Again, as you can see, they are doing a town home development with a mixture of front-loading and rear-entry development, building, I should say. Again, there will be a landscape strip along Highway 138. Again, access points will be along Highway 138. The applicant has indicated several, three, stone water pond detention areas as part of a residential multifamily zoning classification. They are required to do outdoor space for every 400 square foot unit, so that is required by zoning classification if it is approved. This, again, I apologize for the tiny text. This is just some general information that the applicant is, will be developing the site as. Again, they have indicated 181 units will be front-loaded and 34 units will be rear-loaded. Again, they're looking at a density of 8.51 units per acre. At current zoning of RM, they're allowed to do 12 units per acre, but they're looking to go at eight units per acre. Again, there will be only six buildings per row and then the provided open space they're going to put on the subject property will be 3.65 acres. Therefore, it's actually written approval of conditions for the future land use category and residential and RM to the following 14 conditions. The applicant is here. If you have any questions.
All right. Thank you. Hear from the applicant.
Chris, I want to see if the presentation was able to get it up there. I'm not used to meeting in here. I'm so used to meeting in the other building with the clicker. It's so different. Awesome. Kenneth Wood, 350 Research Court, Peachtree Corners, Georgia. So it's kind of interesting being able to be later in the hearing because for a lot of the reasons you guys heard tonight from different people in opposition is the reason why this is the right property. And so this was the Lucas family property since the '40s. They've had it a long time. The reason we're looking at a future land use change is because, and this is the section of the county where we feel like the land use is not correct. There's a clear transition that I'll talk about and that's the reason we're going for that. As they've held it through the years, they've had a lot of different offers for industrial, but didn't feel like that was the right need for it. And as the need with TPA has emerged, they felt like that this was the right use. And let me start running through the plan if you have that. Go to the next one. So this is where you can see it. Across the street, you have the commercial and industrial. You have heavy industrial to the south and then as you go to the west along our frontage, you have a mixture of commercial, retail, industrial, and church. And then as you go to the east, you have more single-family type residential. And so this track sits in the middle between those from very heavy uses to the single-family uses, and so the center part of that is appropriate for townhomes. As we go to the next slide, you can see this is what we're talking about when you see this, even the parts that are in Conyers. Those are heavy industrial, also a church and retail, and they're shown as a R1 type of zoning that sits there. And then you have Rs that sits there. So that's why we believe that as you transition from the single-family toward the industrial, toward the retail and the commercial, that the RM is the right designation, as well as the corridor that we're on is a major corridor, as you heard so much tonight, near commercial, near major corridors, transportation corridors. If you can go to the next one. This doesn't show it as much, but this is the M1 and like I said, they've had it like that, had tons of offers for the M1 and it just wasn't the appropriate. So if you can go to the next one, it's probably too small, so go to the next one, which is the rendering, it's the best to be able to see it. Kind of looking through this, we have the whole frontage, everything you see from the public ground, we have the rear-loaded homes, so they're going to front here, but we also turned some of them so you don't have them all fronting on 138. Unlike so many of them, this does have a master amenity. We would be looking at having a clubhouse and a large pool for the residents, as well as the track that we're talking about in the back. This track is 25.26 acres, but the track that we're looking at acquiring, but not part of the zoning, is the 26-acre track in the back that the city owns. And that would strictly be used for access and green space, but we're not having it part of this. It would just be added and combined at a later date if approved. But it shows you where those connections are. As we've been going through the transportation analysis on this in meeting with GDOT, we're looking at a median break. The other median break is well over 1,500 feet to the west, as you can see it on the plan. And so it sets up us, as we've had those discussions, to tie in directly across. That's why we put it at that location and offer a median break at that location for this, as well as having the ability to get to the traffic light by going to the cul-de-sac down at the bottom. And that gives us great flexibility for access, as well as a right-in, right-out on the western side of our site as well. We're at a 215 units. We do have that mixture as you look and go through it. This is, as we talked about last time, we've had unanimous approval on this. It was, it is a multifamily. And so we are targeting rental because this section of the county does not have this type of housing choice. And so we know that we're one of the first ones to come in here and propose this, this section of it, that it's the right housing choice because it gives an option. Units are going to be $2,000 and up in terms of the rents. We are not targeting children. We will have a major amenity. It would not have playgrounds and stuff like that. It would be targeting empty nesters, young professionals, really trying to get the lock-and-go concept that you guys have heard. TPA is really good at doing that. And here, we have looked at the schools. We're at CJ, we're at CJ Conyers and Rockdale High. CJ Elementary is negative 263 when we did the study, negative 240 for Conyers Middle and Rockdale High was negative 83, 85. That means that it had capacity for that many students for each of those timeframes. Like I said, TPA does a lot of this. They looked at their communities and they only see that usually about 10% to 15% of the units ever have children in them because it's not the style they're going for. They are mostly three bedrooms that they would have, as well as a few two-bedrooms that they would be offering in here. But that is definitely not the style for it. And if you look at the plan and if you go to the next one, you can kind of see some distances. So what we've done is on the north and the west and the east side of the site, up against the single-family, we have a creek on the north plus the 50-foot undisturbed buffer, so big buffers. On the eastern side, we have the 50-foot undisturbed, plus we're set off even further with the homes. On the south side, I tried to draw a dimension in there that's 400 feet from the industrial side, so our residents, because we have to protect our residents as well from what they'll see, they are far enough away at that point over a football field from the heavy industrial that we feel okay about it. We also are self-imposing a buffer and landscape strip on that left side where that commercial and industrial is from there going through. And if you can go to the next one. These are a picture of the front-loaded homes in here. As they indicated, this will be board and bat, brick, stacked stones. You'll have all the high-end materials, as well as the next slides show, the rear-loaded homes. These are the rear-loaded homes with the front porches engaging the street that you would see. Same thing on the materials, making sure everything is of the highest end. And then we have some interior pictures on the next couple of slides to be able to see. These would be the interiors. All the highest-grade interiors that you would see is if they were $350,000 townhomes, this is what they would be in here. And then our amenities on the last slide, you can see the clubhouse and the quality of the clubhouse would be Class A, large swimming pool, all the amenities. Guest parking always comes up, I know, when we talk about these. We have a minimum of 72 and so we have the ability to even have more than that, that we've looked at on the site. And so wanting to make sure that we really capture that. And in closing, just want to kind of reiterate on the site plan, if you can go back to the colored site plan, that, you know, when we're looking at a place, we heard so much about it's on the right corridor, this is out as you're going toward the end of the county in a place where it does not have this type of housing, that we know that this is a good location, it's on 138, we don't have any access that crosses with the single-family in the back of us. We also have the ability to get out to the traffic light as a secondary option and a lot of different green space on the site. We have areas for ponds to take care of stormwater. We've positioned ourselves away from the industrial so that we have that length as well. And then from a design standpoint, having the amenities and having the mixture of units, we feel like this is the right site and the right justification with the single-family to this, to the heavy industrial and the retail, this is why this is the right site for a future land use change. And with that, I'd love to reserve my time for rebuttal.
Any questions?
There's a house that's right there on the rectangular portion. Is that part?
It's included. It is. That's the Lucas family house. For whatever reason, it's funny you ask that, the house, like when you drive in there, it's like an existing paintball that went out of business. So you go in, there's this kind of funky stuff in the woods. I guess that was all where they hide for targets. But there's this long driveway and then this house, and so there's like this really skinny, like 15-foot on the GIS, property ownership, and then it goes to that. So it's kind of landlocked with an access easement, but that is all included, so the parcel would be clean, it's just RM. So it is that transition and it would not be part of that.
How much of the property is, it's R1 and M1, not just M1?
It's all M1 except that little bitty three-quarter, I think, one-acre little part in the middle.
Just that little one, okay.
Yes. And it was just, when they built that in the '40s, I guess it just, that commercial kind of came up on the front portion of it, but it was just a little section there. And that's how that, as we're looking at it, that's probably how it all became, that section of the future land use and everything.
Any other questions?
Yeah. On the technical review sheet regarding stormwater, that first comment, based on the submitted rezoning documents, there are existing state waters, floodplains, wetlands that would be adversely impacted as it relates to the stormwater management. How do you respond to that?
Yeah, we have, ever since that was written, we have actually been out there. We did not find any wetlands on the site. There is the creek that I show in there. It's intermittent. Right now, it's not flowing. Well, with the rain yesterday, it may be flowing, but we know that what we've done with the buffer protection and then the ponds we have, we're not going to have an adverse impact on the stream.
Do you need to get a write-off in the stormwater management?
Yes, I mean, I know I can get a write-off on stormwater management based on all the findings we have now.
Where does your current runoff go into? What tributary or anything?
There's a tributary in between us and the industrial where the interceptor, you know, sanitary gravity line is. It's unnamed, but that's where it...
You know where it ultimately feeds to?
I mean, there's a series of creeks that keep going to the east. I don't know, I don't know the final location, but I know we have to do our part on-site in terms of making sure that's not an issue.
Any other questions?
Can you address the Rockdale County high school capacity?
Sure. And so when we did our, when we did our report, at that time, you know, we contacted three different ones, put it into the report. They said they were at, they were 86 kids under capacity. And I guess that was probably done in May, May or April of that year, you know, before.
Well, it's 58 now, according to the technical review.
Negative 58?
Yep.
Okay. So there's 30 more kids. We don't really anticipate, for sure, high, you know, high school.
When do you anticipate this development to be completed?
So if we were, all right, give me one second. If we were, if we were approved, let's say November, have to do, you know, plan production, GDOT plans, so you're probably talking about two months of plans and so that would be, with Christmas, just call it, you know, February submittal. It's taking probably six to eight months for approvals right now. And so you're talking about in the, you know, end of the summer. So it'd be fall, starting construction, and then you would not be able to start delivering units for another, so this would be, you know, fall of '24 before you start delivering units, so it's a little ways out.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
We have one person in opposition, Ms. Sheila Hannah.
And the reason, thank you for listening. The reason why I am probably the only one here, I don't know if any of you drive 138 from Sigmund Road to Vortusk, there was one sign. I pulled up six feet in front of it and still could not read it. So if you're going 55 miles an hour up 138, how are you expected to read that sign? The only reason why I know, somewhere on the internet, I clicked on something for Rockdale notices, saw that the meeting was either last month or end of August, I think, was the original meeting, which I came to and found out it was canceled. But nobody knows about this. Due to my health, I can't walk up and down my road to let them know. There has to be a better way of notifying the different residential parts. I could not hear everything that he was saying. Okay, I went to the road. There was not even a sign going southbound on 138. There was just the one sign going northbound. I was here in August for the first time in 32 years to place my opposition against the 60-unit townhome at Highway 138 and Eastview, which was ultimately denied. If we didn't want a 60-unit, why would we want a 215-unit? Doesn't make sense. I am glad to hear they did a traffic study because when I attempted to pull out of there last Friday night, took me over five minutes to wait for traffic to come by. Now, he said he's worked with GDOT, but my question is, have they approved anything? Just because he's worked with them and they've talked about doing the median split, like when it comes out from Windridge, or even getting a light, which honestly, I don't see a light happening because you already have a light at Eastview and you have a light at Vortusk. I don't really see a light in the middle. I could be wrong. If those were denied, the only access is going to be coming out of the new development, going to Vortusk, making U-turns, which unfortunately, that's what Classic Drive has been doing for years, going to the Windridge and Riverbend intersection or median split. And they make U-turns, which increases the traffic when I'm trying to pull out of Windridge. The numbers for the schools will be incorrect. I have found out that they are building some type of development at, excuse me, 1357 Pine Log Road. I have no idea. I'm assuming it's for some type of, let me guess, multifamily townhomes, but that's, once again, only a guess on my part, which will then throw students into CJ Hitz, Conyers Middle, and Rockdale High School. I don't know how many units that property is scheduled for. Sorry, I scribbled a lot of notes. I had time to sit and think. I had time to sit and think. 215 units, we're talking 430 cars, probably almost a minimum. What is that going to do to schools, traffic, including buses, which now they do stop for those residential homes, they do stop on 138, which you do stop for. It's not something you can drive right by. And then also the effects on law enforcement. And I don't know, because I had a hard time hearing him, what the price range he was talking about. He did say there would be three-bedroom and two-bedroom. So my question is, how many of that 215 will be three-bedroom? And how many of that 215 will be two-bedrooms? Hopefully, and I hate saying this, you will not take into account the property owners as to who they are. But it's something I don't feel 138 needs right now. And like I said, if we didn't want 60, we don't want 215. And I'm sorry, I have a dry mouth, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all, is everybody who signed up to speak?
Okay. Good man. Here, rebuttal.
Hey, let me try, I was trying to write this down and ask the TPA about this to make sure I get it all correct. So in terms of the mix, was 40% on the two-bedroom and 60% on the three-bedroom. So that was, that was what the mix was. The $2,000 was where the rents start, and then they go up from there. In terms of GDOT, we don't, you know, since we don't, haven't submitted official plans, we don't have approval, we're not asking for a light, we're asking for a median cut. And so with the, you know, if you're looking at the plan, when you're looking straight across the street where we line up, they have indicated us that it makes sense, it meets the distance requirements from the other median cuts, and so we feel confident in that. We also wanted to have the alternate for a light to be able to get out to. So it just makes sense from circulation standpoint and adding that other parcel down there. And then the last other thing about the signage, you know, we were here in July and we got approved there, and I don't know there's a signage thing, and so I'm not sure. I didn't ride by there today to see, but, you know, obviously, we can get her number and touch base with her, you know, to answer any questions on that. So we're definitely not trying to hide anything. We just feel like this is the right, right parcel for the use.
Heather, what is the price point?
There are minimum of $2,000 a month.
Okay, that's right, you said that, okay. And that, how many three-bedrooms and two-bed-
60% three, 40% two.
All right. Okay.
So the-
Ma'am, please.
Please, can we limit the conversation between the applicant and the board?
So are these apartments?
Yeah, this is, what we talked about in July and tonight, we're not, these are, TPA does high-end multifamily. And so for the RM district, this is a type of housing that is, as we, I talked about last time, this is a needed type of housing. We're not proposing the multi-story garden, the multi-story wrap, but these are high-end, you know, 60-million-dollar-type complex where everybody will have maintenance, it'll all be manned at a high level, managed at a very high level, so it will always stay at a high level. And so the value of them are $350,000 in terms of a value, but they are, they are a for rent, it will be an extremely upscale with amenities, the whole nine yards. But when you're looking at it with the industrial, the other neighborhood they were talking about that got denied, it's not, it's not the right site when you look at it on a map. This being on 138, this corridor going out this way, that is the right site. And I think that's why you guys agreed last time.
I'm sorry, I wasn't at the July meeting, so-
Okay, I'm sorry.
-you say that, I'd-
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now in board discussion.
Well, I actually have a couple of concerns. One, the impact to the school system. Two, maybe, just like Tom was saying, maybe some verification from the stormwater management, none of the natural waters are going to be affected. And then two, really trying to figure out as to whether or not, as far as the signage, make sure that we have some type of adequate representation for those areas. Do we actually have an ordinance or a rule that states how big the sign has to be?
We do, and the current sign meets those standards.
You only have to have one sign?
Yes, so typically how we do is that we do one signage per frontage. So if a property has frontage on one property, one side, that's where we put the public notice. So for example, the previous Farmer-Sigmund Road application, we put notices on Farmer-Sigmund and Leicester Road. So this property only has frontage on Highway 138, so we put a sign out there for that. We wouldn't be able to put a sign on the adjacent property, because that property is not being, going through the rezoning process. So you only put signs on properties that are going through the public hearing process. So there's no confusion between that property and the other property that's actually going through the process.
I think that should be probably a consideration, because I've noticed that a lot of people come in and they'll say that they didn't see the sign. So maybe that's something we can revisit at another time to make sure that, you know, people do see what's going on in the neighborhood.
We'll take into consideration of figuring out a better way or a different type of signage, but we are in, we will take that under consideration.
Were these put up within the timeframe?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this says a request to change the future land use. And again, I agree with Steve that that's, you know, something that needs to be highly considered at times. I also have concerns about the school and, and I live on that side of town also.
Any other comments? Any motions? Asides is both a future land use map amendment and a rezoning. Required two motions.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to regarding the future-
Ms. White, if you could speak into the mic, so we can hear you.
What I'd like to make, the future land use request, I'd like to deny, a request to deny, to amend the future land use map from medium-density residential to high-density residential.
A motion to deny the future land use amendment?
I second.
You have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Not opposed? Next, for the rezoning request.
Again, I'd like to propose to deny the request to rezone from R1 to M1, to RM on the rezoning request for 2051 Highway 138.
Second.
Or should I second? Any discussion?
Just if you need.
Right, we have a second, yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Not opposed? Moving on to item R7, which is 1609 Valley View Road, special use permit case number 2022-01, allow special use permit for a commercial dog kennel at 1609 Valley View Road. Parcel 033-001-0004, size 7.1 acres. Applicant Reginald Crumpton.
Yes, again, this case is SUP 22-01. Applicant is Mr. Reginald Crump. He is asking for a special use permit for the, for the operation of a commercial dog kennel at 1609 Valley View Road. This is just an aerial map to show you the location of the, where the subject property is located. Applicant is located at the southern tip of the county compared to where we are right now. This is a close-up aerial of the subject property. Again, that, where the star is located is the subject property. I know it's kind of hard to see, but there is a kind of a weird property design. It has frontage on Valley View Road. There has been concerns, there was a question at the last time this applicant came before you about having frontage on Fountain Blue Road. The parcel does not actually abut Fountain Blue Road. There is like a, there is a driveway that connects to Fountain Blue Road, but there's actually no frontage from this parcel. So therefore, the public hearing side will be actually on Valley View Road. So there would no be, there would not be the need of actually putting a public hearing sign on Fountain Blue Road. So I just wanted to be clarified that, the reason why there's only one sign for this Again, this is the current aerial map, this is current zoning map of the subject property. Again, the property is zone R1, R1, it butts, I'm sorry, not R1, agricultural, it butts a R1 subdivision located to the southern tip of it. There is an existing subdivision off Fountain Blue Road that is zone agricultural, and then there are single-family lots located to the east of the subject property that is zone agricultural as well. Again, this is the future land use map showing that the current zoning map of the parcel is featured medium-density residential. And so, again, summary of this applicant, again, the applicant is looking for, to operate a commercial dog kennel at the subject site. The site is 7.1 acres. AR zoning does allow for a commercial dog kennel with a special use permit to, what was, I think was not stated at the last time, at last meeting, this is after, after the fact request, this applicant did receive complaints about operating a dog kennel. Therefore, this is the reason why they're here tonight to actually obtain a use permit for the operation of a dog kennel. So therefore, this is the actual site plan that's showing, actually, again, the property in better view. Again, it has seven acres, very skinny towards the southern tip of the portion, but has the frontage and acres towards the northern part of the property. Staff does recommend denial of this application for the fact that applicant, the staff believes that the dog kennel abutting in adjacent established single-family residential subdivision would be incompatible with the intended use, especially with the criteria as well. If the applicant had been more, situated in more of a single-family lot, the area of the county where there is not established single-family, established single-family subdivision, staff would believe that would be more applicable for that location. But however, staff feels that applicant being right next, abutting right next to established single-family neighborhood would be detrimental to the, to the neighborhood. So therefore, staff does recommend denial. However, if the planning commission does recommend approval, we do ask you approve with these conditions for the applicant. And the applicant is here, if you have any questions.
Chris, I have a question. You said you received complaints?
Yes, so this is an after-fact request. So we received, so our code enforcement department received complaints. So they went out to actually do investigate the actual subject property, and that's where we were found, that there were several dogs on the property, more than what the code allows. The applicant is running an actual dog kennel, a dog kennel at the time. Again, we determined that he didn't actually have a use permit to actually run a dog kennel that's required by code. So therefore, he's the reason why he's applying for the special use permit to allow him to operate that.
So he was operating a business without the permission?
Yes, ma'am, that is my understanding. That is the reason why we're here tonight, so he can actually be, come in, come in compliance.
Were there any complaints of noise, or?
I don't know, I can't remember if there were complaints of noise, though.
Okay.
How many animals are?
At the time, I believe there were 20. Our code enforcement officer, the manager, Mr. Kelly, can you come speak to it real quick? If you can just say how many?
There were almost 60, that included the litters.
60?
What, how many?
Almost 60 animals?
60 dogs.
Dogs, yeah.
Check it out.
Was animal control get involved in that?
Yes.
Do they confiscate any of the dogs?
Yeah.
All right.
With this, I guess I have a question. With this permit, what, how many would be allowed? How many would he be allowed?
We asked to limit the number of dogs to 15, to limit that number. We believe that would be a sufficient number for the applicant to operate his kennel.
If he is granted?
If he is granted, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Who monitors that?
That would be our code enforcement division, but also we believe animal control would be the one to monitor that.
I'm saying the sheriff's department might get involved, too.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any more questions? At this point, we'll, it's time we'll hear from the applicant.
I'm Lorraine Crumpton, Reginald Crumpton's wife. He can't be here, he had to work overtime, so I'm here to speak. So we started out as a small family, we're a family of seven. We show and we breed. So we show all over the world, we ship babies all over the world. You know, it started out small, we grew. Sometimes we take babies back that, their lives, sorry, I get nervous in public speaking. We take them back to be responsible, you know, for people who cannot have them, no more than we find them homes. You know, we spay, fix them, you know, spay, neuter, find them homes. Sometimes we get a lot that come back, and sometimes, you know, we don't get any that come back. But I always put in my contract that, you know, I'd rather not see them in the pound, I'd rather find them a home. So sometimes we do have a lot, and sometimes we have a minimum. So we just try to do the responsible thing with our babies. So we started just so I could stay home, be a stay-at-home mom with the kids, and it just grew over the years. When we first moved into Rockdale, we came from Newton. At that time, we looked up the dog limit, we didn't see a dog limit. They said five acres, we're agricultural, we don't have a dog limit, so hence why we bought the property. So we have an HOA next to us that later down the years complained. So we ended up getting a hobby license. And at that time is when you guys, from my understanding, had a limit on dogs. So that's how we started, you know, going through the process. Any other questions, you guys? I don't-
What kind of dogs do you breed?
So they're XL American bullies.
Say again?
XL American bullies.
I have no idea what that is.
They're, they're a designer breed that, you know, is very popular nowadays.
Were you aware of the 15-dog limit?
According to, no, not until recently, when we started this. So when I read the, when code enforcement came out, I read it said 21. So that's where, when we've been working with them to get down to the 21. So that's where we're at now. We still do have puppies, of course, but we're at 21 adults.
And how long were you doing, were you doing this before code enforcement?
Um, well, I did this all my life, but in Rockdale, we've been here eight years, eight, nine years, and we came from Newton before that.
Were you required to state the area of occupancy in terms of your, on your business license, where you require to state your address?
Oh, yeah. And we, we also have the USDA license inspector comes out once a year and checks our property, and we're licensed with them.
What would you do with the animals if you had to reduce the capacity? What would happen to the-
Well, I've been already putting them in guardian homes, so some of them I spay and retire, I have been doing, but I've already, I've already been starting to put them in guardian homes, hence we got down to the number 21.
What's the size of these dogs?
Well, they're big dogs, honey. They are big dogs, yeah.
Like 65, 100 pounds?
Yeah, 100 pounds plus. Well, females 75 to 100, males 80 to 130. But big old babies. I got five little ones under eight.
Have you tried to talk with your, with the HOA, your neighbors, to-
Have you tried to talk with your, with the HOA, the, your neighbors to, um, resolve the issue to any degree? So just?
Well, the thing with the HOA, before we even had the dogs, like when we first moved in there, we only had five. They harassed us since day one we moved in. It wasn't even about the dogs. They stole our garbage cans for using the driveway, our, our easement driveway. I mean, it's been harassment every day, to the point I even had to, um, call the police on somebody. So it's been, I, my kids are scared of a certain person, like, it's been that much harassment.
Okay, thank you.
But if they're hearing dogs bark all night, that could be problematic.
They don't bark all night. Um, you can even ask the code enforcement guy. Uh, when they came over, they barked for a second and that was it. You know, we've also had, um, they did call the police and the police sat at our, end of our driveway and came to us twice and said, you know what, we're not following up anymore because I don't hear your dogs.
Any other questions?
Does the, um, capacity of fifteen dogs, does that include puppies? Can somebody answer?
Uh, uh, yes, ma'am, it is. Uh, again, staff was trying to, uh,
So it's total?
Trying to, um, trying to, to estimate what, uh, what the, uh, litter, what, what encompass, uh, but we, we, we fell on fifteen. Um, we, we are comfortable with i- if, if, if the, uh, commission decides to make it twenty-one, we, we're fine with that. Uh, but fifteen was the number that we thought would be, uh, probably most amenable to the, to the situation.
And, uh, ma'am, the size of litters typically?
Um, anywhere from five to fifteen.
Five to fifteen?
They're big dogs, so they have.
Yeah, I understand. Wow, okay, so, um, there are some requirements in the, um, special use permit, like fencing, wall sizes a hundred feet off?
Yeah, we did, uh, we have all that. We already had the barn, uh, the, the big barn up already. So we have all the, the fencing, the tartar kennels, various, kear kennels, everything.
Is your fencing like stockaded or?
Um, it's six feet high and it's welded wire, and it's, um, the real expensive tartar, so you, there's no getting out of that.
Right, but it's, it's open, so it's, it doesn't noise buffer is what I'm saying.
I'm not for sure what you mean.
If your dogs are out in their kennel runs?
Uh-huh.
Then if you have open fencing, you're not really doing anything with noise buffer like a stockade would give you a little.
Oh, okay, gotcha, yeah, but they, they have options to go inside too.
I'm just asking.
Yeah.
XL.
Chris, if we grant the permit, does that go from year to year? Cause that doesn't change zoning or, or mapping or any of that? So will they have to come back and get a permit every year?
Uh, no, ma'am, no, it's tied to the property. Um, so if you grant the, the, uh, the property, um, the permit, then it's subject approval with this condition. So you've made it, given them the permission, but they still have to show that they're in compliance with that. Um, if they're not in compliance, then their special permit would not be granted for them. So they would lose that, lose that status. So you, you, there's still, there's still requirements they have to admini- administer. Uh, the, the use itself, uh, has those supplemental agreements, it's just, uh, what she's asking is to allow the operation of one and so forth.
And if it's denied, um, what happens to the dogs that are existing there now? Would the county or code, whoever worked with them to place those animals? Or do they just have to go, would they be euthanized?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was probably reading something, I apologize.
I said, if, if this is, the permit is denied, what happens to the animals that are there now?
Uh, the, they would have to come be in compliance with the number that's allowed, uh, allowed. So the ones that are on there, they would have to be removed. Uh, preferably, uh, it'll be up to their discretion on where they would, where they would go. Uh, but they would be limited to the number of, uh, dogs that are allowed.
Right, but I'm saying, is there a time limit? Would that be?
They would work with code enforcement, we would, we would be, we would work with code enforcement, uh, I should say, we will allow, we will allow the applicant to have enough time to remove and to be in compliance. We wouldn't require them to be like, guess what, they gotta go tomorrow.
You wouldn't care them to be euthanized, that's what I'm asking?
Oh, no, ma'am, no, I, I don't, I wouldn't be comfortable of making that type of, uh,
Okay, alright, that's what I was.
Yeah, no, no, ma'am, no.
I'm really trying to see, how do you govern the special use permit if you don't know the size of the litter?
Uh, that is something that we would have to, uh, look into, um. Um, well, I would say this, anytime you offer a special use permit, you know, normally, uh, most planning departments will be, will keep an eye on those anyway. Uh, cause usually if the, especially if it's a, a business, you have to, you have to do your business renew- renewal. You'll still have to review, be reviewed by the planning staff or the planning department just to make sure you're in compliance. Um, and sometimes code enforcement does do sweeps, just kinda just going around and see if actually everything is still in compliance. So those are one of the things that we do try to monitor. Uh, but that's just one of the, uh, things that staff has to do or, or, or has to comply with, with trying to make sure, uh, everybody who applies for a special use permit, uh, is still adhering to their conditions and so forth.
Do they have, they had a business license?
Uh, I believe they apply for a business license, but unfortunately, it cannot be approved until the use permit has been issued.
Okay, so there never was a business license?
No, we've had one for years. And we're also registered with the state, we pay taxes, I mean, we, we've done everything correct.
What did you declare as your business?
Uh, it's the name of it or?
No, 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 that, what, what, what's?
Uh, dog breeder, dog breeder, yeah.
And should they deny this special use permit? How many dogs can they actually have that they?
Is, is five?
Five?
Yes.
Now, we've had our hobby for years and that was seven. So would it go back to the seven or would it be at the five?
No, it would be five.
But if we were to approve it instead of a number, it's twenty-one. But that fluctuates based on the breeding, does it not?
Well, according to the standards, the, anything under six months did not count. So it's only twenty-one adults.
Correct.
How fast do you move them out?
Um, well, when I ship them overseas, they're about five, six months. So anything under that is usually five, six month is the cutoff. But usually eight, well, according to state law, eight weeks, they can't leave until they're eight weeks. But usually between eight and twelve weeks. This year's been slow because of, that we had, uh, everybody wanted some last year. So now it's slow this year, so, but typically by twelve weeks they're out, unless I'm shipping them overseas and then it's, they got five, six months depending on when they can, um, fly.
How difficult would it be to keep it on the either side of twenty-one?
Twenty-one is fine, actually, because like, um, I still, the code enforcer, I was getting down to that number anyways. Cause a lot of the babies I had were actually returns. So I was fixing them and pet homing them, it's just this year, the pounds are full, nobody wanted dogs this year. So I had a lot, you know, and a lot of them, I wasn't just gonna, you know, let people dump them in the pound. So I was just trying to find homes for them.
How many breeding females do you currently have?
Um, I do a lot of guardians now, but right now I have five, six of age and I, I kept most of them male. So most of my guardian females, uh, my females are in guardian homes where they'll, they'll bring me the litter at eight weeks of age.
There are a number of ordinances that, um, just count the adult dogs and puppies up to a certain age are not counted in the limit. Just clarification.
So if you kept it as a hobby then, and you had five dogs, uh, which is the, the requirement, and then you can have, and you said that the litters could be from five to fifteen and they don't count, then I guess the purpose of the disruption with, I guess I'm trying to find a way in terms of your neighbors, you know, that we don't wanna, your business to also, uh, suffer, but at the same time, you've had, you've had some complaints with the neighbors.
It's just the particular HOA because we're, we won't be HOA with them. My, my direct neighbor, he comes over for barbecues. And then the other neighbor that is not HOA, she is being harassed by that same person. She couldn't be here because, um, her husband passed two years and it was the anniversary, so she had to go out of town to not be in the house where he passed at, so, otherwise she would have been here also.
I'd like to hear from the people who are signed up, um, speak, and then you can have your remaining time.
Uh, we have three individuals who are here to speak on, in opposition. Uh, Issa Western, I hope I said your name correct, Ms. Western. Uh, I guess she's not here. Uh, we have Mr. Floyd Lane III.
Floyd Lance.
Oh, Four Clamps, that is our.
I actually have pictures if you're, would like to see. Good evening, my name's Floyd Lance. Um, I'm at thirteen fifteen Millstead Avenue in Conyers, but I also have property in Fountain Blue. Uh, in fact, I ha- I'm her neighbor on two sides. Uh, as you, if you can put, can we pull up the site plan? The color one, if you would please? Yes, that one right there. Okay, you see the cleared off site that we're building a house? And then the other side at the front of the community? Both of those properties are mine, along with all the properties across the street. Uh, when I bought this property, I checked if there was any permits like this and nothing showed up. But when I came in and started working on the property, I noticed a very noxious, a very obnoxious odor. Uh, think of it like, uh, when you step in, in dog feces. This smell is just like that and ranged over a thousand feet. And so much so that not, not only all my properties are affected, that the neighbors around me are affected. They had, and if you also look, if you'll turn around backwards, you can see the little building, but you see that long area and what you're looking at in those pictures are dog, uh, dog, uh, uh, kennels. And they're ten to fifteen feet from my property line. I have built a berm and you can see the berm in that picture, all the way across there. That's what that little grassed area right next to it is. Uh, these dogs, uh, do make noise, anytime I come on that property, they greet me. And, uh, the, um, and the berm was my way of taking care of it. Uh, I'm one of the several people that called, uh, over the county to find out who's taking care of this. Now, part of the problem was that the feces was being washed all down and into a pit, it was open. Now, your own code, first of all, says that those dog kennels have to be two hundred feet from any property line. The building a hundred feet from each property line. Now, the building may be okay, I'm not sure. And I would think that they would have asked them to come into compliance before they came to this meeting. But by your own code, they're out of compliance. Also by your code, uh, by section forty-two dash seventy-two, general provisions, free from, uh, accumulation of animal excrement and objectional odors. If you'll see on those pictures, you'll see excrement that they have thrown on my property. I have not found the cesspool, but the smell is still there and they've been tossing excrement on my property. Uh, so I'm not real, and your code says that, uh, to the extent that they will not injure the health, safety or comfort of your citizens affected thereby, they're not supposed to have noxious odors. And they're also, if they wind up doing a kennel in the, in their building, they're gonna have to have some way to treat the waste, um, if there's some type of septic system or something that they can use. I'm not objecting to them having a, a kennel inside, what I'm objecting to is to get under compliance. We're building houses here and we're building nice houses. And would you buy a house that, within an area of, that would smell like that? And, you know, and it, and the subdivision predates their kennel. I just pray that you guys follow, see, see what the code is and stand by it. You've got the pictures there showing what's happening now, and, uh, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, the next person to speak is Dr. Charles Height.
Thank you, um, commission. Um, first I want to just address some of the things that were said before we got up here. I've been, uh, the HOA president for about, going on three years now, alright? I did not even know that the property that we're talking about was not on, in our subdivision. That's how close it is to our, when I would, when I first took over as, as HOA president, I would, of course, and I would go door to door and I would, you know, give newsletters to our, to our, um, neighbors. And I would even wonder why this house that's right here on our street does not have a, a mailbox on our street. I've never talked to the, um, the owners of the, of the property. I've never had any conversation with them that was any way negative or not, cause I, I didn't even know what they looked like. I just thought that that was a house that was the first house on our street. And I was wondering why I can't get, put something in their box or kinda, you know, get a chance to meet them, I didn't know what the situation. So, so when it comes to our HOA and this idea of us harassing, that's never been any harassment in any way whatsoever. We have one, we have, uh, some neighbors who are living in the very front of our subdivision that have, have came, have went to the, to the property and tried to talk to the owners about the situation, about the stench, and about what was going on, so I have Mr. Huff, one of our, our neighbors who, who really brought this. I live in the very back of the subdivision, so I really didn't, I'm not really necessarily seeing all of this at first. I had, it was brought to my attention from my other neighbors in our subdivision. Fountain Blue, when you go up the street, the first house that you see is the house that we're talking about. Even though the address is Valley, uh, is it Valley Road, that road is very long. Their house sits pretty much on our street. When, we're, and Mr. Floyd is building homes right now, we're talking about seven hundred thousand dollar homes. Our homes are, our property values are from six fifty to going up to eight, eight fifty right now. And so this right here could very much, very much affect our property value. So I just read, "On behalf of home, of the homeowners, I want to express our collective opposition to the issue of this special permit to allow the owners of sixteen oh nine Valley View Road property to operate a kennel. The owners are already in possession of a large number of dogs, pit bulls, many of which stay in the kennels on the property and cause a noise and nuisance to our, uh, to our neighbors. Current homeowners and builders of new properties that, uh, that improve the value of our home are subjected to daily stench that comes from the property. The continuation of this large housing of dogs and the approval of a special permit for a commercial dog kennel will adversely affect the quality of life for our residents as well as affect the future value of our properties. We ask you to consider the long-term effect on your fellow Rockdale citizens who compose a, a, a still growing community of high-end properties ranging in the praise value of six hundred to eight hundred thousand dollars." Uh, at this time, of course, Fountain Blue has new homes planned adjacent to sixteen oh nine Valley View, as, as Mr. Floyd has just told you guys. His, he has properties right now that are being built, as we come right into our subdivision, he has four properties that are being built right adjacent to, to the property that we're talking about. Uh, these homes would likely be, uh, very close to existing kennels, which they are, which he's talked about. I've talked to Mr. Floyd about the smell, about the, he's told me about the situation with the, with the feces coming down onto his property, which would be the property of some owner eventually when they buy that property or he can even sell it at the price that he needs to sell it at. That would then, of course, if he, if he can't, that would affect all of us. Um, so to encourage the growth and compliance of these issues, um, I'm, I'm sorry. So allowing the use of a commercial kennel surrounded by residential homes would not support community growth and expansion nor preserve public health and quality of living. Uh, there's a number of things that we talked about, uh, parking, I mean, I think in the application it states about four parking spaces are available to service the proposed facility. Um, but please be advised that this site is a residential property and does not meet the standards of commercial, uh, property requirements in accordance with the Rockdale Code. They don't even have a, there's nothing here about a, a, a accessible parking for, for handicap, which is required by law. which is required by law. Let's see. Residents near the property are familiar with the recent code enforcement violations associated with this parcel. Due to the sheer number of dogs, the stench, and the close proximity to neighboring residential development, this site is posed serious health concerns. Over 50 dogs were sighted by a code enforcement that was residing on this property. Now, of course, I've heard the number 60 now. Was it, was it 60 that I heard before, that they've actually found? The legal distance to residential properties is 200 feet, which Mr. Floyd just talked about, so I won't go further into that. So I just want you guys to take consideration. The HOA has not had any, and I know for the last three years, I have not had any contact with them. I've never, I thought they were part of our community until about maybe six, eight months ago. I just didn't even know that they were not a part of, because they were so, they're right there on our street. Alright, so the, the fact that, that, you know, and as far as garbage cans, I've never, you know, no one's ever written me a letter, no one's ever said anything to me about, hey, somebody stealing, I don't have, this is the first time I heard of that. I have not heard of anybody complaining about someone going and, and, um, in any way being a nuisance to, to, to that, to the owners of that property or saying anything to them. Definitely not from the, from HOA. Okay, so, and I know I have some, some of my neighbors who are here, they're not on the docket to speak.
Your, your time is up, sir.
My, oh, I spoke that long?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Thanks.
Sorry. Thank you guys for your time, appreciate it.
We have remaining time for rebuttal, if you want.
So go with the first one, with the pictures. Um, that was before we went into, um, we changed everything to be in code. So they just came out yesterday and took pictures, code enforcement did. So we are officially in code. All that stuff that was on the line because we didn't know at that time is gone. We took it all down, everything is down, and the kennels are on the building. That's it. There is nothing, nothing more. So we did go into code as far as what they were asking and what was, you know, mandated of us. So all that has changed since he's been there. Now, of course, with any kind of animals, agricultural animals, horses, cows, you're always going to have a smell no matter what you do. Now, we, at that time when he was coming, we had a worker come in every day to scoop and pressure wash. Now, of course, workers are going to be workers, sometimes they miss some and pressure wash it back, but we could have had a good, like a 10, 20 feet, and then he has the burn. So I don't know what he's talking about us dumping on that, on his, on his place. We have never done that. I have a garbage can, anything, puppies, put it in a bag, throw it in the trash. So I don't know what he was talking about on that one, so. That HOA man, I've never met him. The HOA, we had issue with the people before him, eight years ago, stealing our garbage cans from day one. I've never had an issue with this guy, never met him. That was not the man I was referring to, that we've had issues with, that has harassing us. Um, I don't, I just, questions, any?
Is it possible for you to, how difficult would it be for you to get down to 15 dogs as recommended, I mean, suggested?
Well, we're at 21 right now. Is that including the puppies, though? Because-
No, I don't think they count puppies.
Yeah, we're at, we're at 21 right now. So, I mean, it would still take me some time to get rid of the remaining ballot, remaining puppy, adults, sorry.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Can we, are they, some code enforcements here, are they, uh, you verify they're in compliance?
Not at, not at this time, no. We, we can't, we don't have the officer here, so no, we don't, can't comply, we can't confirm that.
Okay, thank you. Right, we're now in board discussion.
I have a comment. And I'm a dog lover, so I understand. But I have an excuse for a dog, not a huge dog. My big concern here is that I have been on this committee for a little over a year, and this is the first time, I believe, I have seen the planning department just ask for a denial of something, which tells me a lot. Because even though they said, if you're going to approve, do this with these conditions, but seldom do they do that. I am concerned about the smell, even with 21 dogs and even with puppies. Because I grew up on a farm, so I get that. And when you are in, um, your home, you don't want to have that smell. I also, I saw the pictures of the kennels, um, and, you know, yeah, I would have a problem with that if that was near my home. So, uh, and the fact that you are out of compliance, uh, and neighbors were complaining, that also concerns me. Uh, and it, it concerns me that there are, it's very hard to stay in compliance when you have animals that you really can't control how many babies they have, and how many people are going to purchase those, and when they're going to purchase them. So it's very difficult for you to maintain, uh, compliance at all times when you don't know, unless you're way below whatever that number is. Because you have no idea how many babies they're going to have. So those are my concerns.
Any other questions, comments?
I do admire you and your husband for trying to adhere and making changes to become compliant. So that speaks a lot as well. And if it's something you didn't know, wasn't aware of, you did take heed to it and you made, you became compliant to some degree and made changes.
Any other questions and or motions?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to put a motion on the table that we did not permit.
Right. Motion denied, second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, one opposed. Okay, alright. Alright, moving on to item R8, 2462 Wall Street. This is also a special use permit, case number 202202. authorize a special use permit for a daycare with at least three children and no more than six children. Parcel number 077E010359, .39 acres. Applicant Natasha Collier.
You're the commissioners, we finally made it to the last one, congratulations. This last case is SUP case 22 dash 02. The applicant is Ms. Natasha Collier. The applicant is looking to obtain a special use permit to operate a childcare, um, center, again, with at least three kids and, three children and no more than six. Uh, the proposed summary of this, again, this application, again, they're looking to do, uh, three, at least three children, no more than six. It's located in Arbor Glen subdivision and established in a family residential subdivision. Uh, the applicant has indicated that they will comply with right from the start, uh, as required by the state of any licensed daycare in, in the state of Georgia. Uh, the use, uh, is, R1 zoning does permit, uh, the daycare use as a special permit. Uh, again, uh, that applicant has indicated that there will not be any outside changes to indicate that this, uh, facility, I mean, this home will be advertised as a daycare as required by code anyway. Uh, again, this is just an aerial map to show you where it is located. Again, the property is located in Arbor Glen subdivision, uh, is right as frontage along Wall Street, um, and then have, um, and have access along Elton Road, um, southeast. Uh, future land use of the cer, of current subject property is medium density. Uh, everything surrounding is medium density residential. Uh, this is just a air, aerial map to show the current zoning condition. I apologize for the, uh, that the property is not in light industrial, that's just a subdivision layer on top of it. It's actually zone, uh, R2, single-family residential. So don't be alarmed by that. Uh, staff does recommend approval of this application with the following six, uh, three, um, conditions. Um, and the applicant is here, uh, for their, uh, for their presentation. Uh, do you have questions of staff?
Does this have a fence? Doesn't look like it has a fence.
I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Lynn, what'd you say?
Does the resident have a fence?
Has a fence, uh-
Is the fence stand, is the back-
I believe not yet, ma'am, but as, as code, they will be required to have a fence, uh, from right from the start, we'll make sure they have that, especially if they have an outdoor play area.
Okay, thank you. It's going to be a requirement.
Christopher, I thought we already approved this one.
Uh, again, this one is part of the, of the applications that had the signage issue, uh-
We're hearing it again, yes. Alright, at this time, we'll hear the agent.
Hello, I'm Natasha Collier. I reside at 2462 Wall Street. Um, I am looking to start a childcare program in my home at 2462 Wall Street through right from the start. Back when I was here in August, I believe it was, um, there was an issue with the signage, um, but the signage was put in the correct amount of time. I'm on the corner of Wall Street and Arbor Glen. Where Arbor Glen is, the street is right there on Wall Street. The street is not too far from the house. I am on the corner lot. I did receive approval from the president. Um, and as the application states, I'm looking to have three children, no more than six, because that's all I will be able to get and be approved for based on their age.
Any questions?
I have a question. What's the ages you're looking to serve?
I'm looking to serve newborns to five years old.
So you're going to have a pre-teen? Or you're just-
I'm-
Five, five is kindergarten, so.
Right. Um, most likely they won't come because by that time they'll be going to school, but I'm just open to having them from zero to five years old.
Okay, okay. Um, and are you going to have like a, um, playground outside?
Yes, in my backyard, but I would have to, of course, have, have fencing.
Yes.
So once everything, you know, gets approved, then I will be able to put the fencing, I'm going to put the fencing up.
Chris, is there a height to that fencing?
Uh, yes, the maximum height, uh, for any fence in the county is eight feet.
No, I'm just trying to see, because I'm thinking about neighbors in the neighborhood with that kind of playground that's required for children would not want to see that.
I know for, uh, for us, uh, is the maximum's eight feet, there's not a minimum, uh, requirement. I cannot remember off the top of my head what the state requirement is for the height of the fence.
Okay, okay.
Is this your first time operating, uh, a daycare?
Yes.
Have you spoke with your neighbor next door about your-
Yes, I have. Um, she doesn't have an issue with it. I spoke with my neighboring neighbors and they don't have an issue with it.
If I could say one thing, we just looked up the state code, the requirement is a minimum of four feet, uh, for the fencing.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
We have one person to speak in opposition, uh, Ms. Cecilia Macklin.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I apologize, she's in here to support, I apologize.
They sitting together?
Yeah, I apologize, it's been a long meeting, myself as well, sorry.
No problem, no problem.
Good evening to everyone in attendance. Yes, I was getting ready to straighten it out. I'm in here in total support, total, from my heart to your heart of Ms. Collier. I am her neighbor, she represents herself well, she loves kids, and I want to, having a daycare does not, please hear me, it does not bring your neighborhood down. What about the lady that lives across from you that have six kids, that stays there 24/7, Think about it. And people, everybody don't want their child into a daycare center. God bless the little babies, but they carry germs. What they do, they want a one-on-one. Ms. Collier's home stands out in the neighborhood. Her driveway will accept six children if she is okay to have six children. I admire her, she doesn't have a lot of little kids of her own, which would say, well, she would have six kids and then she got six of them. That's not the situation here. I am a retired teacher myself, I love children, and there should always be a place, an environment, where parents don't have to go into these centers. My time might be up, uh, because I can talk, but I come to you all heartfelt and with the truth. Her having three to six kids will no way bring the community down. People are working from home. She will not have a traffic flow. Like I said, her driveway can accept, if it be the case, six children. So think about it. Think about it. What's the difference in her having children that's going to go home than the ones that have six kids running to and fro all week, all day, all the time? My time is up, thank you for yours.
Thank you, ma'am. Alright, we're now in discussion. We don't have, um, the neighbors, the opposition. Um, we did, I recall last time, there was a letter that was presented us from the homeowners' association president, uh, saying he, he had no problems with this, uh, application.
Mr. Chairman, we're ready to accept a motion, I'd like to make one. I move that we approve the special use permit case 2022 dash O2, to authorize a permit for daycare and at least three to six children at 2462 Wall Street. Approval with conditions as stated by the planning department.
Alright, motion, motion's approved, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, not opposed, motion approved. Okay. Um, well, we, our next, uh, report, City of Conyers Nun, Rockdale County Nun. Board of Commissioners meeting will hold the zoning public hearing for the county items in person at 6:00 PM on Thursday, October 22nd, 2022, Thursday, October 27th, 2022, at 903 Main Street in the auditorium. Next regularly, planning commission meeting, if I understand it correctly, will be in January, and that'll be January 12th at 6 o'clock in the Assembly Hall. Motion to adjourn?
I move the way adjourn this meeting.
Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, for adjourn.